Okay, welcome everyone to the Board of Supervisors meeting for Thursday, June 2, 2022. Can we all please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please remain standing for a moment of silence for all our men and women serving overseas. Okay, announcements. I'd just like to say that we had an executive session this evening. We went over personnel issues, litigation, and what else did we go over? That's about it, right?
Labor negotiations.
Labor negotiations, yes.
Mr. Chairman, you have a real echo for some reason.
Yeah, it's...how's that? A little better?
A bit out of the park, I'm on.
Yeah, it might be a little too loud. So, all right, we'll hand it over to Kathy.
I'd like to say thank you to a job well done on the Memorial Day Parade. It has been several years since we've had it. Everybody was loving it, children, parents. We had more residents to show up for the parade than as long as I can remember, and as many more participants than I've ever seen. It was a very nice event, and it was a very beautiful, solemn ceremony to honor our veterans who gave the ultimate sacrifice. And Mr. Hayes did a really good job at master ceremonies. And we had a young lady who was 13, was she Ken?
Yes.
13 years old that ran the entire program and did a really good job. So, congratulations, Shay. You did great. And that's all I have for tonight, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, thank you, Kathy. And Mark?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I find myself having to do this all too often, way too often, but I want to send my condolences out to the Kemp family. Nick Kemp, who Nick and his brother Fred were the fellows that worked the parking lot at Warminster Shop right for many years, and they had recently moved to the shore to be closer to their brother where he could care for them while Nick passed away last week. And I know we had just lost Joe recently.
Right.
And it's a tremendous loss. You know, I called his brother. I told his brother, you know, I worked in the building trades for 35 years and saw some hardworking people. It's one of the hardest working men I've ever known, ever known. So, keep his family in his prayers and Nick in his prayers. He was a fun, fun guy. So, they're having some services for him next week, but hopefully his family's doing well. And then I just have a few Park and Rec announcements with chair's permission.
Sure.
Volunteers are desperately needed for Warminster Day to be a successful event on June 11th between 11:00 a.m. and 4:00 p.m. Two and four hour volunteer slots are available. Discount flower show tickets, June 11th to the 19th at FDR Park. Adults $43, young friends 18 to 29 or $37. And you can pick those up over at the park office. Discount amusement park tickets are now on sale at Park and Rec. Check the website for availability. Summer camps for kids must pre-register. Art camp with Young Rembrandts, June 27, July 1, July 11 to the 15th, August 8 to the 12th. Mad Science, June 27 to July 1, July 11 to the 15th, August 1 to the 5th, August 8 to the 12th. Skateboard camps at Monroe Park, July 11 to the 15th and August 1 to the 5th. And this is a good one here. Know your Medicare options, valuable in-person program for persons seeking info on Medicare and Medicare Advantage. And that's on that Monday, June 20th at 6:30 at the rec. Must pre-register for that, but that's a good one for people that are already entering the Medicare age. And I just have some upcoming events for June. The 4th is Bethania 5K at Warminster Community Park Pavilion. The 4th of June is the Armid Yoga in the park every Saturday through August. The Biggie, June 11th, Warminster Township Day, Warminster Day, which is, I think that's one of the...what did I say, one to four for that Warminster Day?
11:00.
11:00 a.m. to 4:00 p.m.
Yeah, I knew it's 11:00.
And the week after that is Operation Ward 57 5K and Car Show. For those of you that don't know, it's an organization run by Heather Solinsky, who's a local resident. Ward 57 is the amputee ward at Bethesda Naval Hospital. And Heather's been working with these people for years and years. And she has this annual event where some of the fellows come up from Bethesda and the people at Holiday Inn are kind enough to put them up with rooms. And over at Crafty's, they put dinner out for them after the event. So, I want to give Crafty's a shout out too because it's really good what they do for these guys. And this year, they'll be honoring the Gold Star families of the fellows that were killed in Afghanistan at the airport in the terrorist attack last fall. So, some of the families will be here for the event. And that's on the 18th of June at Warminster Community Park. So, anyone that can stop out. And I don't think it's too late to register for the walk and run as well. The 19th is Park and Rec Fishing Derby at Peace Valley. And the 26th at Ben Wilson Center Food Truck Event and Car Show. Last year, we went to that and it was, we were overwhelmed with the crowd.
It was amazing.
It was. They didn't expect such a crowd. They weren't quite frankly prepared, but I think this year will be much better prepared for it. They had the car show and they had really good food trucks. It's a nice event. That's on the 26th at the Warminster Community Park and it's for the Ben Wilson Center. That's all I have, Mr. Chairman. Thank you.
Thanks, Mark. Judy?
Yeah, I haven't been able to go to the last few meetings of the Ben Wilson Center or the library because of some health issues, but I want to tell you that they have fabulous programs this summer. Adult programs, children's programs, whatever you can think of. The library board is setting back, looking at all their options. The new director of the library loves our library, by the way. He really does. And they're setting up, looking at all their options and what they want to plan for the fall now. But there's a lot of summer programs going on. You can look at both of these websites, Ben Wilson Center or the library, and find lots of things to do.
And Janice?
I just wanted to, once again, go back to the Memorial Day Parade. I want to thank all the businesses along the parade route that took some extra time to make sure that their yards were nice. Now that summer's coming, it's nice to drive through the neighborhoods and see the people that have been taking the good job, taking care of their yards and their lawns and how much of a difference it makes in our township. And I just wanted to thank you for taking the time to do that.
Correct.
Oh, yeah. And we had, yes, and we had a wonderful Chamber of Commerce luncheon a few weeks back where we recognized some of the college students and high school students as well for their achievement academically. Some single parents were recognized for all their hard work, and that was a neat experience because one girl brought their daughter, and she was such a joy. And it was so fun to see them working so hard and get recognized. So, I encourage all of these nice lovely high school ladies in softball that we're going to recognize here shortly as well.
And that's, the Chamber of Commerce has an annual luncheon where they give out scholarships to each of the schools. And they give out two Women to Women scholarships for people like this woman that's going to school and raising a child. It's, I say it every year when we go, this, this job that we have here, we all love and enjoy. And it's mostly a volunteer job. And a lot of times, you get hollered and screamed at for things, but that's one of the events that we really, really enjoy. Janice, myself, and Kathy were able to attend. Judy, you were sorely missed. But it's a really terrific event to see these really, really bright young kids that are there to receive their scholarships. And congratulations to all of them. I know we recognized a few of them at the last meeting.
Right. And we just had, the Chamber of Commerce just had their annual golf tournament today that helps fund that. So, it was, it was a fun time. Okay. So, now we're at presentations, and we have a group of young ladies here that have done something that hasn't been done for how long? How many years?
22.
22 years.
Yes!
Fantastic. So, we have the Archbishop Wood girls softball team here who won the JCL championship. And, and I believe they won yesterday in a tournament. Now you're going to the state finals or the state tournament, right?
Yeah.
Wonderful. That's fantastic.
Will be televised? I'm sorry, Mr. Kay.
Well, we're going to, we're going to bring them up. We have a proclamation for you to show our gratitude for your great achievement. And I'd like to read that, and then we can answer. I'm sorry, I don't remember your name.
Jackie.
Jackie. Jackie can answer some questions. I'm hoping that, it's at home, right?
Yes.
That's awesome. So, maybe we can get some, some team support out there.
Yes, that'd be great. Let us know.
Yeah.
Post on our website.
Well, we'll find that out in a few minutes. So, why don't everybody come up here? And then I'll, I'll read this proclamation.
Come on, come on. We won't, we won't bite you, I promise.
What, do you have two plaques there?
Yeah, this is the district. This is the PCO.
Put it toward the camera so the folks in home can see it.
Yes. Everybody else can see it.
Did you get everybody in there? Did you have everyone? On behalf of, on behalf of the township supervisors, whereas we, the Board of Supervisors of Warminster Township, Bucks County, Pennsylvania, congratulate the Archbishop Wood High Girls Softball Team on their Philadelphia Catholic League Championship. Congratulations. And whereas the Archbishop Wood High School Girls Softball Team defeated Conwell Egan, our manager's Catholic High School by a score of 3 to 2, the win provided the Archbishop Wood High School Softball Team their first Philadelphia Catholic League Championship since 1999. Wonderful. And whereas the Archbishop Wood High School Girls Softball Team showed strength, initiative, and the character of true champions, and now therefore be it resolved on the second day of June 2022, we, the Warminster Township Board of Supervisors and the entire Warminster community honor and congratulate the Archbishop Wood High School Softball Team on their Philadelphia Catholic League Championship. So, congratulations, girls.
All right.
All right.
I loved it.
Yes.
So, our, our next game is a state playoff game. And we just got word today that the game is at Wood on Monday at 4 o'clock. We're not sure who we play yet. They're still finishing out their districts. But to have a home game for a state playoffs is unheard of. And we just got really lucky there. So, if anyone can come out.
Home field advantage!
Home field advantage, for sure. And we really appreciate you doing this and, and honoring this team. These girls worked so hard all year. And they really, they really pulled it through. And it was a great game. And hopefully, the game will be streamed on Monday. We're working on that. And we'll send the link.
That's great.
Thank you.
Thank you, girls. Okay. Was that supposed to go with that?
No.
Okay. So, now we have, there's no land use, correct?
No.
This thing's awful loud tonight.
None.
Okay, public comment. So, here's your opportunity to come up and comment on non-agenda items and subject to the three-minute guideline.
Sure, come on up.
Say your name and address.
Hi, Jennifer Young of 1047 Kemper Drive. And I just wanted to ask of the board, really beg of the board, to reconsider the Public Works Department's Mow to Meadow program. Their current program is allowing the grass to grow about three feet high all around our community within our parks. And while I understand the benefits of water runoff and wildlife, there are ways to take land like that and convert it into a meadow in a way that would be more pleasing to everybody's eyes in the process and would better represent the community. Penn State Extension and Bucks County Master Growers have stated that just by letting the grass grow really tall, it's going to become infested with weeds and invasive species that are not wanted in this area, and that there are some better ways to do it. I have printouts from Penn State Extension that they provided me with. I was hoping to give the board and beg that you would reconsider how, just how the Public Works Department is doing this, not necessarily getting rid of the meadow program.
Thank you.
Now, are we, are we doing the meadow program in the neighborhood parks? Because I thought it was just restricted to Warminster Community Park.
There's, there's going to be a presentation on this tonight.
Okay.
So, and by the way, we, we've had those discussions and documents with the Extension. So, you know, this is, this is in its initial stages. So, just so everybody knows, this is, this is an initial program, and there's going to be a lot of tweaks and changes. And we understand that, you know, it's not necessarily wildflowers yet. Certain areas may not ever be wildflowers, but we'll have that presentation. So, anyone else?
Yeah. Well, I'm Brian DePoeve, 1005 Corson Drive. To follow up on, on her comments about the, the meadow program, while I don't disagree, it's, it's probably a good idea to create more meadows. On the other hand, I think the public outreach on this, the community involvement was nonexistent. A lot of people were surprised. So, I think maybe you have a good idea, but the wrong approach here. There's recreational value to these pocket parks as well, and that's all been taken away. 30-plus years of kids playing in these little pocket parks. We live right across the street from it. We see, we see parents coming home from work. 10, 15 minutes, they walk along the creek. They, they see fish in there. They, they see turtles. Now, perhaps the, the meadows will create more of that type of wildlife, which would be fantastic. But the recreational aspects, I wonder in the basis and background of your decision-making, you consider the recreational value that's gone, taken away forever. Especially in the last three or four years, there's been an incredible increase in the number of children that play in that park. And it's a shame that it's taken, it's been taken away with this effort. I don't know if any of you have seen that field flood, but when it floods, it's going to wipe everything out. Everything that, all the work that you've put into that is going to be wiped out in one rainstorm. There's no way in hell a meadow is going to improve the stormwater situation. It's the wrong approach. It's just going to flatten everything that's there, especially on the left-hand side. We get one of these storms once a year. It's going to wipe everything out. So, there's got to be some planning that goes into this. I understand it's a work in progress, but if there's anything the local folks, including myself, can do to help the environmental committee, happy to help, love to provide some input to the process. But when you have adjacent property owners that are affected by something like this, it's shameful that no one was notified. You know, I came home from vacation and saw three feet of grass. Not only is it an eyesore, it looks like a vacant lot now. It really does. People that might be trying to sell their houses right now, it's really a turnoff. And the allergies that are created by the lawn grass, it's now pollinating, is another issue that I don't think anyone took into consideration. So, people are now suffering from the lack of foresight and the planning that went into this. So, we're, I'm happy to hear the, the upcoming discussions on this. I understand is there a presentation later?
Correct.
Okay, that'd be great.
Yes. And as, keep in mind that what we're doing here, and you'll see in this presentation, is part of our stormwater mitigation and obligation for the MS4 plan and our, and our NPT's discharge permit. So, there's a little more to it, and there was some thought and planning. It wasn't just thrown out there. There was some planning. So, you know, and again, this is a work in progress. You know, there's going to be tweaks. There's going to be some, there's going to be some changes here and there. We're not, what you see right now is not etched in stone, okay? But, you know, we, we have to follow our, our obligations to the, to the state for, for stormwater mitigation. Okay, next.
I just have a question.
Want to state your name and address, please?
Joanne Van Hatten, 993 Corson Drive. You said that, Brian had said that you weren't notified. And you said this was a work in progress naturally, and that it has been developing over a period of time. However, if that's the case, then why we're not, why were the neighbors not notified that live next to these pocket parks and open spaces that this was going to occur? All of a sudden, this year, we see this pocket park off of Corson Drive. The grass is awful. My husband always calls over to Parks and Recreation to say the people that are supposed to cut the grass have done nothing, or they've done a lousy job. But none of this was, the residents have not been informed. And I think that if the board is going to plan something like this, since we, the residents, are the ones that are living next to or across from these pocket parks, then we should all be informed of this by the committee, the whoever you are, I don't know. Do you all live in Philadelphia? I'm sorry, Philadelphia. It's starting to look like Philadelphia, that park. Do you all?
Wow. Wow. Okay. Fairmount Park's one of the beautiful, most beautiful parks in the world.
It is.
Yes.
I understand that, but that's not Fairmount Park.
Well, they have plenty of meadows there too. So, go ahead. Your point's well taken.
Yeah. I, I would ask where each one of you live. Do you live in Warminster Township? Do you live next to these parks and all? I mean, I don't, why is that funny?
You know why it's funny? Because you can't be on the serve on this board if you don't live in the township. So, I don't, I don't.
The Board of Supervisors, those of us on this side reside in Warminster, the ones that...
Every one of us.
The staff members, not necessarily.
Okay. I get it.
Yeah.
But my question is, why were the residents that are next to these parks or in that area notified? All of a sudden, there's weeds growing, and it's awful looking. And you, you cited Fairmount Park. True, but there's a lot of other parks in Philadelphia.
Hunting Park's a nice park, though.
Yeah. How about Hunting Park?
Hunting Park? You mean Hunting Park Avenue and the neighborhood?
No, no. Hunting Park, the park itself. Not so nice.
Well, I mean, I can find some areas around here. You know, let's, let's not get into a bait. And let's not trash Philadelphia because Philadelphia provides all the wealth for this area, whether you know it or not. It's the, now it's the sixth largest city in the country.
Okay. I'm not going to debate that with you.
Right. Okay. So, let's not, let's not, you know.
You have an opinion, I do too. I just know that that park across the street from me looks awful.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. I guess I'm dismissed, huh?
No.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome. Who's next?
Hi, my name is Scott Flynn. I live at 1059 Cornell Drive. My property does back up to Bar Ness Park. And I'm reiterating much of what has been said that previous to individuals. It does not appear that there was any notification to the residents, all the residents, let alone those people that live adjacent to the parks. You know, as, as good government stewards of the community, you would expect that something of this impact would have been, provide some notification to the residents instead of just being forced upon them and, you know, not, and not have them be able to have some input. I just wanted to also give you a visual of what's been happening with the parks. I'm not against the mow to meadow. However, if you are going to not mow, you should at least be mowing at least along the sidewalks because along Bar Ness Park, it backs up right along to, sorry, Log College. And that, the grass was like a foot or two high before they even mowed it. It just finally got mowed about two days ago. Now, all that grass is just laying on top of, you know, the new grass that's on, and it's just going to probably die or get brown. I'm sorry, Janice Carlton mentioned that's all the neighbors. She's very proud of the community, everybody maintaining their homes and the properties. Then you go and see this property that's not maintained. Who owns that property? Oh, that's Warminster Township property. So, how does that look? You know, the residents are maintaining our property, and Warminster Township property's not being maintained. You know, it's kind of a disgrace. You know, it's not a community I would want to live in. And I'm, I'm very embarrassed about that, especially, you know, the, you know, the Board of Supervisors and their approach to rolling out this process of mow to meadow without having any community input. Lastly, what I was going to say, that on our way, you know, I walked over to Kemper Park. Kemper Park has a baseball field, has pavilions, and has a playground. The baseball field is not something that would be a mow to meadow, I would assume, but there was, again, a foot or two of grass on Kemper Park baseball field. Now, how do you expect, you know, township youth to, you know, play baseball on, on a field of that nature?
I, I can answer that. Because of some of the weather, Memorial Day setting up and taking, dismantling the Memorial Day Parade, they're, they're a little bit behind. So, anywhere where there's, we have, we have this, which we'll present to you, well, in his presentation, that anywhere where there's active areas like baseball and football and all that, they are going to be cut on a seven-day rotation. But they're, the Public Works people are a little bit behind right now. They're trying to catch up. So, there's, there's certain areas that are going to be cut every seven days. There's certain areas that are going to be cut every 10 to 14 days. You know, and again, these buffers can get wider. This is, as we're seeing now, some of the residents are not real thrilled with this. But so, there's going to be some changes and some tweaks here. It's just asking for everybody, you know, voice your opinion, and then we'll, we'll take it under consideration. And we're going to make some, you know, we'll adjust things as we go. So, I appreciate your, your concerns and your comments.
Thank you. And I would like to propose or make a, have one of the township supervisors make, that they would be able to make a motion that the parks begin to get mowed again on a regular basis until they have the sufficient plan that the, that residents have some input to vote on. I understand there's money in the budget. And I was just asking now, is there still money in the budget for the mowing of, of the township parks?
Oh, yeah. There's money in the budget.
And that money has been transferred to other budget line items?
That's, that's not, you're not allowed to do that. Anybody that understands municipal budgets, you can't transfer money from, you do understand, then you know that whatever's in that park's budget stays in that park's budget. We can't spend it elsewhere. It has to stay in the park budget.
Well, there's, I understand there's various line items that within the budget, they have certain...
We haven't changed anything.
There's certain things for other expenses. So, I want to make sure there's just money available for mowing.
There's, and the parks, our Public Works is doing that, yes. As best they can right now. And if we want to get caught up, and then a lot of this will, will not be an issue anymore, once they get caught up.
Once they're caught up, and all your comments will be taken under consideration. We'll make the right decision based on, we have to do the stormwater management because most of you residents understand, in Warminster, we've got a lot of the homes and everything we're built on springs. So, we are, under the MS4 project, we have to take care of stormwater management. And that's like our number, that's like one of our number-one responsibilities. It is demanded by the state that we do that. This was one of the options that was given that a lot of the other townships are, are starting to use. I don't know about other states, but I know in other, in other townships, they are, for that very reason, because of the stormwater management in the area. So, maybe we can find a happy medium between the two.
That's, that's what, that's what we're trying to do.
That's what we're trying to do.
And you know what? And it's, and we're happy that everybody came here.
And I'm not coming against, out against, not the mow to meadow. I'm coming about the process that it was, has been done.
Right.
And also the, the procedures for it done. If you're going to turn mow to meadow, you just can't stop mowing and say, all right, it's turning into meadow, as was previously stated. And also, you, if you're going to turn into meadow, places are public access where sidewalks and baseball fields, pavilions, playgrounds, this should be a buffer zone of 10 yards. It would be my recommendation. I don't know exactly what, you know, the Penn State would have to say about that, but you just can't not mow and expect people to continue walking around the neighborhood with two feet of grass on the other side of them.
No, that's, that's not the intention. No, they're supposed to be buffered. Well, and again, we're, we're, Tom was out all day today assessing everything. And we're going to make, we're going to start making some changes. And, you know, the buffer zones are going to be a little wider. And you'll see that in the presentation. So, I asked that you stick around and watch.
We appreciate the comments.
Yeah, and the comments are all fine. I mean, you know, we, we understand that this was going to, especially for the residents who, who usually, who... who usually, who live across the street from these places, we knew that they would have some concerns and, you know.
Most of the people here are guests, and are probably the people that are most affected by it, the people that live adjacent to it, but as you said, as was mentioned, you walk through township or drive through township, and it's, you know, it's an ice water, and I understand they were comparing to Philadelphia. You understand what they're saying. They're not, you know, it's looking like it's, people don't care what amounts to.
And I want to, I want to address this conversation after we see their presentation, but I have been speaking with the neighbors, and I am concerned, as you are, in how this was implemented. You know, we were, we talked about this, you know, that it was a possibility, this is what we were going to do, and then all of a sudden it happened. So I understand your concerns, but let's see what they have to show in the presentation, and then we'll address it again.
This has been out for two months to the board. So, you know, we looked at it. Originally, when we were talking about leaving certain areas go, it was mostly in the rec center, just to help the Public Works get through. And then we saw, now we have to pass a resolution for the MS4. Is that tonight, Tom?
No, that's later on this year.
Later on this year, yeah. So there's certain things that we're obligated to do. There's a 100-foot repairing buffer from each bank of the stream that we're not going to be able to completely do. You're not supposed to do anything in there, and that's to mitigate the storm, whereas one of the gentlemen said, you know, the tall grass is not going to stop that, but actually it does, because that's a flood plain right there. So it doesn't get washed away, and that's the whole point of not discharging all kinds of sediment and, not dissolved solids, but the suspended solids into the waterways. So there are a lot of its mandated from the state, and we're just trying to get credits for it without disrupting the township as much as we can. So all your voices will be heard, and then we'll see the presentation, and we'll start figuring out where we can tweak it. You know, we appreciate everybody coming here.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else would like to speak, or would you like to see the presentation first?
I'm not talking about this.
Sure, come on up, come on up.
Hi, my name is Stowe Sandberg. I live at 3301 Centennial Station. I had written a letter to you. On April 13th and 5/9, we received two memos from Centennial Station, the Condo Association, saying that they were cutting down, cutting off the elevator, one elevator per building. So they were working on, do you have a question?
No, 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 go right ahead.
So for approximately set four to six weeks, all service for elevators will be off. In my building, I counted about seven people who needed assistance with walkers and canes and such. And I spoke with Richard Gans, I sent him a letter, I think he's the president of the Condo Association, and he said, it's tough, it's their problem. He's not making any accommodations. And I quote, I'm quoting, I want to know. So we, he doesn't have a list of all the disabled people in the whole community, which I think would be helpful, because they have special needs. He sent out on May 9th a memo saying, these are the services for food that you can order, like a Peapod and Shoprate has it, but the food will stay down in the lobby, and no, no one's going to bring it up. So one solution I had would be for them, for the condo association, to hire people to bring up the food. Another thing that I thought of was to have a stair lift go up and down along the sides of the railing. That would be another thing. But he should have an idea, the condo association should have an idea of how many disabled people there are to address their specific needs. They're going to be stuck for six weeks in their, in their building. That's it. They agreed to take the trash out once a week, to have people put out trash by the doors, like that they do at Anne's Choice, and once a week it'll be removed. But I feel that it's a violation of the American Disabilities Act, because there's no accommodation at all. And that's basically what I have to say.
Still, may I, I wanted you to know that I've got multiple, I live on the same street as on Centennial Road. I know many of the residents that live at Centennial Station, I've received many phone calls about this. What we are doing tonight is, so everybody here understands, we have no jurisdiction in this matter, unfortunately. This is a state issue, but what we're going to do, because we care, let me finish, we care enough about the safety of our residents that we want solutions. So at this time, we are going to have, the press will be writing articles, we're trying to get the attention of our lawmakers, and there will be a presentation down the road if you'd like to listen to that, and we'll fill you in more, but we have no jurisdiction. The ADA has been contacted, okay? So we'll give you more information later in the agenda. We're going to be talking about what's happening there, okay?
The state is not responsible, because I called the state up, I called them first. They're responsible for making sure that the elevator is installed properly.
Correct.
And then they're also responsible for the maintenance of it once a year, they have to have a record of it, but they wash their hands, they said, it's not my problem.
Exactly, that's exactly what's happening. So we're going to try to put their feet to the fire. So if you would like to listen to the, what we're going to talk about.
Tonight?
Tonight. It's on our agenda at the end, because we're doing this as a service to our residents, because your safety and all the safety of all the other residents in that, in Centennial Station is a main priority, okay? Even, okay. Thank you.
We've also contacted our state senator, Maria Collette.
I spoke with her, too.
Yeah, our state representative, Megan Schroeder, I spoke to her, she was looking for some solutions. And we also contacted the county, and they've come back and gave us some options, but the unfortunate part is that the board has no jurisdiction, because it's a private land, it's privately owned.
Well, the safety.
Well, we are, we have our emergency management checking into the options. You know, the other option could be an exterior elevator that Mark so loves so much. We've used them, Mark and I in the construction industry used them hundreds of times.
At least to hold on for dear life.
Yeah, yeah.
Well, there was a matter of reimbursement. I'm kind of friends with John Kovacs, because he's disabled, I don't know, he uses a walker, you know, you open the door for him. He said he was renting a motel, Motel 6, he said he was going to Motel 6, because he doesn't know what he's going to do. So is there a reimbursement program or a stipend or something, so that he could rent the motel?
From the state?
I don't know where it would come from, I'm just.
Well, we're looking at all the options for you. We're really, we're trying to find out all the options. Unfortunately, the elevators have a useful life, and they're retired now, and they have to redo the entire elevator.
But to close, close it down for six weeks.
It's unacceptable, you're right. It is unacceptable, that's why we're going to discuss it tonight. We cannot, again, we do not have the jurisdiction, but what we can do by having this meeting, it is televised, other townships are watching it, okay? This is happening all over Pennsylvania, it's not just us. So something has to be done in the state house. We want to put the legislators' feet to the fire, so they do something about it.
So it'd be like a few days, like each one?
Well, that's actually impossible, because the entire elevator, the entire elevator system, including the electronics and the controls and all the logic and everything that goes into that.
Would a week be feasible?
No, no, and you have, and by the way, that, the elevator constructing company that you, that they.
How did they get the contract?
Allied, they are the best, they are the best elevator construction company in the tri-state area. They're just a contractor, and they're giving them reasonable deadlines. So, I mean, we, you know, we feel for you, but that's actually to, quite honestly, that building should have had two elevators, so they could do one at a time. We weren't around, we weren't around for that, you know, that was probably a revenue.
His statement was, well, you knew that when you walked in there, when you bought the place, that.
So you're a member of the condo association?
And this is what they're told?
This is my question, like, the condo association is made up of all the people that live there, correct?
Correct.
Okay, you're allowing your condo association, you're allowing your condo association to tell you, as a member of the condo association, that you, tough luck?
That's what he said, too bad.
Well, but isn't that the people that live there?
Why don't you guys storm the castle and tell them we're not going to put up with the building?
I'm confused with that, that's, you know.
His statement was, it's their problem, and, you know.
Well, that's, and that's, who is that, the management company?
Richard Gans, I think his name is Richard Gans.
Well, who is he?
Do you know?
I'm just asking, who is he?
He's a, I spoke, I called up the man office, and I spoke to somebody, and his name is Richard.
So is he the board of directors?
Like, he's the president.
Of the condo association? Well, don't, doesn't he represent you?
He's supposed to.
Is he, Mr. President? Is he the president of the condo association, or is there an outside, he's the outside management company, probably. The condo association is probably too small by itself, and they probably hire an outside agency to maintain the facilities, is that what you usually do?
Oh, the board of.
You have a board, I know you have a board, but that board then hires, do they then hire?
It is in Hack Oil, 6310 Centennial Station. Richard Gans is the president of the homeowners association, associate is the management company, and.
So you may, what I was going to say is, what you may have is a private cause of action, you end up suing your own condo association, because what's happened here is, okay, the first mistake is, some Board of Supervisors, long before anybody was on this board, allowed a building to be built that has 55, you know, people.
Five stories.
Fifty-five plus.
Fifty-five plus years old, that are five stories, and they only have one elevator.
Right.
So that's, that's just, that's just crazy. That's insane, but it was done. So there's nothing you can do. So you have two choices, they can either build another elevator somehow, they can put the temporary elevator that Mark loves to talk about, the construction elevator in there. It can be done, it's not cheap, it can be done. Or you can, you can bring, a group of you can hire counsel, I don't know, and negotiate, or, and/or bring your own private suit, to have them put people up in hotels and have them pay for it, because it's your money. I mean, the irony is, you're suing, it's your own money, it's your, it's a private, your own association, which has total control of your building, you know, is totally like contained government, your own little government there, right? And the Board of Supervisors has no jurisdiction over them for this sort of thing. Like, the elevator has to be replaced, because it's probably unsafe, right? So let's say that's dangerous, so it has to be replaced, which you want to have them replace it. That's not your issue. Your issue is that you're going to strand people at high floors.
For six weeks.
For four to six weeks, who have no real, really great way to get down.
Well, some people have relatives, I know one guy, Stan Gooseburg, he has a son in Fort Washington, so he may end up there. And then there's another lady who's on the fourth floor, and she's going to go down the shore to a friend's house, because the friend said, oh, we all have a room, so stay there. So those are people who are making accommodations, but there are other people who don't have relatives in the area and cannot.
Well, my only, again, a group of you can get together and bring, hire your own attorney, if you want, and bring some action against them, in addition to what the Board of Supervisors and what we're trying to do by giving it publicity and saying it's just outrageous behavior, that you just can't do that to people. They have no choice but to replace the elevators. But the problem is that you have old people or handicapped people, who are both. Listen to me, listen, I have a bad knee. Going up and down five flights of stairs up each day would not be a lot of fun for me, especially if I had to do it several times. It's not great exercise. So I understand, we understand what you're saying, but that's another avenue that people should look into. If your own, if your own president is giving you a lot of garbage, and you elect this person, maybe it's time.
Well, what would you sue for?
I'm not your lawyer, I'm just saying that you'd have to get someone who would, to do, to do, to have, what you would want, at the very least, is to have them reimburse people if they had to stay like at a motel somewhere for three or four.
Because right now, like, there's no firm done until it starts happening.
I understand.
So you can't.
I understand, but you, but maybe in a way, though, but it's anticipated harm, it's anticipated harm, so it's actually the best time now, before it's too late. You're unnoticed now, they've told you what they're going to do, you don't have to wait, because they've told you they're going to do this to you, okay? And not everybody has a son, or a daughter, or a cousin, or a friend that they can, they can stay with, especially for four weeks or six weeks. You know, a few days, a week, but, you know. Yeah, but I mean, that's my suggestion, but I mean, the Board of Supervisors, who are all incredibly sympathetic to the issue, do not have direct jurisdiction over the issue. That's why they've contacted, even tonight, in executive session, we were trying to contact various political parties in the county and other governments, other levels of the government to say like, hey, this isn't right, you got to try to do something here for these people.
We've all been really involved, like.
Yeah, I mean, it's really, it's a terrible situation.
It is. Now, you pay your HO, you pay your homeowners association.
Yeah, four thirty-five a month.
What is it?
Four thirty-five a month.
Okay, so what are you getting for that? Yeah, yeah, but you're saying, the point is that.
So in the meantime, we're going to continue to talk to the Senator, the state rep, county people, and we'll try to help out as best we can. And Kathy will, Kathy's going to spearhead that for us, so she'll be in touch with Pat a lot, I guess. Pat, you and Kathy? Okay.
That's okay, that's fine, no, that was fine.
All right. Hello?
Hello, how you doing?
I'm well, thank you.
John Wright, 458 Hopwood Drive. I want to talk about something a lot less controversial. We'll talk about pods, not tie pods, just pods that people put in front of their houses to store furniture for.
Oh, go ahead.
Portable pods.
Right.
The operative word being portable pods. They pick them up, take them, store them, bring them back. We celebrated the one-year birthday of the one next to my house right there.
Oh, no kidding?
And when I called zoning, they said, oh, don't feel bad, there's one down in Davis Road, been there for 10 years.
Really?
Now, I've owned two properties in Wormminster, and both times I had to get permits to put in a shed in my backyard. These are, these are pods in the front yards.
So people are just using them for permanent storage?
Evidently, yes.
Okay, well, do you have the address?
It's 450, and I don't know what one on Davis Hall. 450 Hopwood, H-O-P-W-O-D.
We might have to at some point craft an ordinance to govern these things.
Right.
I called zoning, I did go to the zoning board, and they said, we don't make the policy, we just enforce it. And it's, it's you guys to make the policy.
Well, honestly, nobody should be putting containers, before you know it, you'll have the overseas, the 40-foot wide.
And they are portable, it says right on the side, portable storage.
That's the big thing now.
So, yeah, we're going, we'll.
Mr. Chair.
Thank you very much.
If I could, please.
Thank you.
That's a simple, I mean, most municipalities have that now, it's called, it has to be visible in the front yard, so it can be monitored by the township, and it's, you know, six months or one year, and then extensions need to be granted, you know, by the township, so that's an easy ordinance amendment.
Okay, and there would be a permit involved with that, to have that?
Yeah, I mean, each town's.
Because it's a storage unit, it's not really, it's not like an RV or a boat.
No, it's exactly for the pod situation.
We would need to craft a specific ordinance.
Yeah.
As if it's not, obviously, there's not one on the books.
Well, we'd have to advertise it, so we couldn't do it now.
So we should, we should.
We can have that drafted for supervisors' review, and we can have a public hearing on it.
Does that work?
Oh, yeah.
Okay, thank you. I know, I wasn't aware of that.
Right, these are things that we don't know, that when people like you come out and bring it to our attention, we are prepared to take action.
I've lived here 56 years.
Yeah.
First time I've been out.
No, I appreciate that, that's great, because that's how we, you know, I mean, it's a big township, and I don't drive up and down every road, but I appreciate you coming out, we'll take care of that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, Mike?
Hi, I'm Mike Fire, I'm in Northridge, Cornell. I'm going to kind of go back to the grass thing. I don't live, I don't butt right up against any of these fields, though a lot of my neighbors have been complaining, like, especially like the Gorson Drive one, where they take their kids over, and they can't anymore. But I heard, I'm not gonna get into the details of those things, because there's enough people here that have already spoken about that. I just wanted to mention that, like, you were talking about planning, I know the chair of the EAC has met with the Public Works guy and there was a lot of planning going on and everybody's talking about planning and what it's gonna be. We're all, we're all on board with the meadow thing, right? It's got a lot of benefits, we understand that. But the problem is, they stopped mowing a couple of months ago and we're still planning. I, I think we got this backwards a little bit, you know.
Well, we're not, Mike, we're not still planning, there's, there's been planning for two months and.
Well, it, it seems to me that we abruptly fired the mowing contractor guy.
No, mistake, number one, the mowing contractor guy did not want to account for his hours for, for his payment and he decided he did not want the contract anymore.
Well, you guys could probably fight that in court.
Well, that, but regardless, let's not, let's, let's tell the truth.
That's fine.
Okay, thank you.
But right now, you have eight guys doing the entire township.
That's right.
Well, no, we don't, we have more than eight, how many people?
I think it's, it's not many more than eight.
Okay, all right.
No, I'm told it was eight guys.
And who told you that, Mike?
Somebody that knows. And then, we're doing the entire township, including a couple non-t township properties like firehouses and things like that. I mean, if we can spare the time enough to do that, we can, like, mow a little bit more in my neighbor's backyard, like, right behind his fence, instead of just twenty-four or forty-eight inches.
Well, we're, we're, we're gonna get to that, Mike.
Well, I understand, but the problem is, we're gonna get to things, but the program started two months ago, even the EAC, we were surprised that it's gotten that far on when a lot of these neighbors came, we thought we were just gonna give them information on that meadow program, and we found out how far along it was, we were all kinda taken by surprise when that happened. And, you know, that's, that's the problem we're having right now, is it just seems like, you know, we didn't have a plan B when we didn't have the mowing contractor any, any longer and it, we're using the meadow thing as a cover.
No, that's, that's not true.
That's the way it appears to me and a lot of people.
Well, that's, 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 that's your opinion, but that's not it. By the way, the, the state DEP and the NIPD's permit was approved and this is, this was part of it. So, this has been going on for a long time before it came to the EAC, which is just an advisory.
I understand.
Okay. So, you know, this is, this has been in the works and we have to pass a resolution in the next couple of months that continues to disallow. Yeah, okay, okay.
Are we, are we hiring seasonals this year for Park and Rec to supplement some of this?
No.
We don't need them.
Well, we're not hiring them until we get the, the contracts straightened out.
And I, I know we're not picking up trash as much as we used to either and.
What, in the streets?
Not in the parks.
Oh, I see a lot of it in the streets.
We're working with.
Speaking of that, I actually have a neighbor of mine that walks the entire area every day, picks up trash by hand.
We do have a plan for the trashcans, we do have a plan to get something off the ground with our hauler to help us with that. Because empty, two guys spending three days a week emptying trashcans isn't the best use of manpower when they could be doing something else. And this is the plan that we pivoted to, once I found out the ruinous policy that this township had of wasting a hundred thousand dollars a year on a contractor to cut grass when every other township on the planet cuts its own grass.
Well, that's apparent because their grass is actually cut.
Well, actually, it wasn't being cut because it was actually in their contract. It was written in their contract that we understand that you're supposed to cut it once every seven days or once every ten days and you haven't been doing that. Now, I don't even know who in their right mind would write that into a contract. So, you know, and then, and then what happened with this guy is that we asked him to account for his hours. Show us how many men, men worked in what area and how, what, what did they cut, and he did not want to do that, he just wanted us to write him a check every month. So, you know, and it's, and it was in a contract that said, you don't, you don't cut the grass the way it's supposed to be done, as in your contract, and then we wanted to see accountability and he didn't want to do it, so he didn't want the contract anymore.
I don't have a problem with that, but, I mean, I've been here for six years.
But, but there you go, we didn't, we didn't fire the guy.
Well, I've been here for seven summers.
This is what happened and that's the truth.
This is the first time the grass isn't being cut.
Yeah, well, we're, we're, it's, there's gonna be some hiccups and we all said that and we're, we're, we'll look at this plan and, and we'll keep tweaking it to, you know, we may, I, I don't know what the outcome's gonna be, maybe we will mow barness. Maybe we, maybe we'll plant trees in barness and make it a forest again. Because it's, if you look at the, and Lisa will get into this, there's a hundred-foot riparian zone that we're supposed to not stir.
Yeah, but the houses are more than two hundred feet from it.
Well, no, in some of these areas, they're not, a hundred foot takes you into the roadway. So, we're not even, you know, and it's all part of the MS4 and the NIPD's program. You know, we don't, that's, we don't make those rules, that comes from the state.
Well, my thing is this, and we've had discussion that, hey, we're, we're shifting gears that our Public Works guy's gonna do all the mowing.
Right.
Because we're contracting out paving, stormwater works being performed by the, the MUA.
Right.
And we know there's gonna be a few hiccups. My, my concern is it not get out of control.
Well, exactly.
We see that it can get out of control.
Exactly.
We have to have a plan to bring supplemental help in, if need be.
If need be.
Just like when the trash was piling up, we were looking any direction we could.
Right.
To get somebody in here to pick it up.
No, I, I, yeah, exactly, so.
We just wanna see what the Public Works department can do.
Right.
And if we start bringing in other people right now, on June 2nd, we're never gonna find out.
Correct.
They don't have responsibility to do work on the storm, the storm sewer system anymore.
Right.
So they don't need to do that. So we have them available to do this, and just like every other municipality cuts its own grass, my goal was to see what we could do in the summer of 2022. And I realize that people that live adjacent to these areas, it's not gonna be their favorite thing. And we're gonna talk about, with Public Works, how we can make changes for those two areas that have already been addressed, Barness, along Long College Drive and Gorson, to expand the areas that get cut. As long as we keep the cutting away from the tree lines and we hit that hundred-foot mark, we do have some elbow room there. But right now, we're about six weeks into this. And I understand, we're still trying to work out some kinks. We had a lot of rain, we gotta slow down. We wanna cut every single ball field every week. We wanna cut all the, the, and we're gonna see this in a minute, we wanna cut all the, the parks where all the sports activities happen every week. This week, we haven't been able to do that. They got the two of them so far, they're gonna get the two others tomorrow, because of Memorial Day and the rain and whatnot. But, that's the plan. It's, and we're, at, at a minimum, we wanted to put in areas along the sidewalks, along the, the fence lines, swath ten, fifteen feet wide, as long as they're not in, next to the creek areas, to help it. If we need to make them wider, we'll make them wider. But right now, we're trying to see, we've got, we've got people, we've got equipment, we've, we just bought some new equipment actually, to try to do this. We had a hundred thousand dollars in the budget, somebody mentioned the budget earlier. That's a hundred thousand dollars every year, that's not sustainable. I'd rather take that hundred grand and buy a piece of equipment that we could use for the next ten years. And that's what we're looking at. We have able-bodied employees that can do this work. They're willing to do it. I think they did a great job over the winter with the storms, I have every confidence in them that they're gonna be able to do this. But right now, June 2nd, it's not a perfect plan and we are still working on it. A couple extra passes in some areas, every week or ten days will probably help. It'll help the bad feelings, it'll help the idea that people have been abandoned from the program. We haven't abandoned anybody, we're trying to see, to make sure that the areas that absolutely need to get cut every week are getting cut.
And if that happens, that'd be great, because these, the ones you did the other day, like along Long College, Long Sinkler, it got so high on those little buffer areas that now you just have large clumps of grass.
Yeah.
It just, it looks worse actually than not cutting it, you know, so it's, it's, just looks like it's just uncounted, that's it.
Well, we don't, we certainly want that in the township, and you know, one of our main goals is to beautify the township, that's why we add more greenery and we add the buffers, all of that. So, again, it's a work in progress, we appreciate all the comments that you made, we will take it under consideration and find something that is agreeable, that we can find that will work for, for most of us.
And this is my last one, I just wanna make a recommendation, this is, as an official Ducky Marshall at the Rubber Ducky Regatta.
Okay.
If you do this next year, could you, wait, hold off on Sinkler, because we use it for parking? We couldn't use it for parking this year. My son and his family came up and he saw that and he drove around and ended up parking somewhere else, because he didn't want, you know, my three-year-old granddaughter walking through three feet of grass. So that's the only suggestion I have, is, you know, at least wait until the Rubber Ducky Regatta, because it's, there's nowhere else to park, there's only a limited number of spaces on Alley Road. So we've been using that for, probably forever, but we couldn't use, nobody parked there this year.
Yeah, next year, there's gonna be other additions to beautify everything.
And we may have additional resources next year.
Yeah, so, you know, just, look, we understand it's a change and we wanna work with everybody, most people are resistant to change and that's just human nature and we get that. But just give us, if, if you wanna come to the meeting every month and let us know how things are going and make some things, then that's fine. I mean, we're, we're, we're not, we're not telling you tough crap, we're not gonna listen to you, we are listening to you. So, we're gonna make some changes, but keep in mind that there are some requirements that we're, that we're, that we're, have to do.
And just to let you know, if I didn't think you were gonna listen, I wouldn't have gone and said anything.
I know, Mike, yeah.
Thank you, Mike.
Yeah, thanks. And you're on the EAC, and by the way, you know, we did ask you, we charged you actually with making recommendations when we do start to turn it into wildflower and meadow, you know, the, the type of wildflower seed and things like that.
We're all looking forward to helping out.
Yeah, we're looking forward to, to your input as well, so, thank you.
And any other residents that wanna get involved in different committees that we have?
Well, I'll tell you what, when we start making these meadows, I'd love the residents to get involved. You know, we'll, we'll till it and hopefully it doesn't flood, wash everything away, because we'll have to do it again, but, you know, this is a work in progress. And, you know, when the riparian zone should have trees and shrubs in them and not just meadow.
Yeah.
So, a lot of these areas might be returned to wooded areas. So just, everybody be cognizant of that as well. Yes, sir?
I'd like to ask you a question.
Sure.
You're talking about worried about a flood zone, I live right next to the creek that runs down under Gorson Drive and into the thing.
Right.
You know, you just let the creek grow, you leave trees in there, you leave, that's not, that's not helping the flood.
Did, you should.
Oh, I do tell him, Andrew, oh, I do talk to him.
Okay.
He told me the other day, he's doing everything right, as far as this flood, this mode of meadow thing is.
Yeah, but that has nothing to do.
We don't own the creeks and it may not be Andrew's responsibility to remove the trees.
That's the state.
I'm not talking about, they let.
You're talking about there's trees cross.
Yeah, everything, everything falls in there.
Right.
Well, that's gonna stop, it always stops the water from going under Gorson Drive, it goes over.
If there's, if there's trees across the creek that are damming it, we should probably notify the state and then we can remove them, but the state owns the waterways, not us.
Well, these.
But that's another complicated thing. We, we don't really own the waterways, we're not supposed to be in there, because then you need an erosion and sediment control plan, just to remove a tree.
So you have no control over the creek.
Not, not, not in the creek itself, that's true.
Well, this is just a runoff from the.
What, like a, just like a swale?
I think it comes from the golf course, doesn't it?
Is it a swale, or is it actually like the Little Neshamity Creek? There's twelve of them there.
Yeah, it just runs into Little Neshamity Creek.
Yeah. It's a drainage, it's just a drainage?
I guess, I don't, and it's a little creek, there's.
Well, why don't you, can, if you can reach out to somebody at the township, Tom or Lisa, and just let, let them, let Tom and Lisa know, Lisa's the assistant manager. Tom's the manager. But we, we, I mean, if you're calling Andrew, then, then the manager and the assistant manager don't know about it. So you should probably start here, because these are the guys that run the township, Tom and Lisa. So I would suggest that you get hold of the manager or the assistant manager and not go to the departments. The departments are supposed to take direction from the manager, from the top, and not supposed to go out and just do, this, this is, this has been one of the major problems in this township and was one of the reasons why we were going broke.
We've been here twenty-five years.
Right, and that's why we were going broke, because everybody was contesting all the departments and they were going out and doing everything without instruction from, without an actual work plan. You know, when I say work plan, a written work order, things like that. But hold on, let, so hear me out. So, I'm suggesting, and I actually, I'm asking everyone, if you have issues, you need something, you know, like a, a tree, a fallen tree that's blocking a drainage swale, please call the manager or the assistant manager and let them know. And then you'll probably see more action, because the Public Works Department takes direction from the manager and the assistant manager. So, that's something that we'll get to it, if we get to it.
Mm-hmm.
And that's why you're probably not getting any action.
We, we can contact the state to get advice on how to handle those issues, but I don't want Public Works going in the creek beds and, and doing anything.
Well, the township's the one that cuts the trees down and leaves them fall there.
No, we don't, we don't cut them and leave them, that does not happen in this organization.
No way.
Not, hey, I don't know what happened in the past, it's not happening now.
We don't know what happened.
I mean, I, some, one of, one of the supervisors mentioned to me the other day that, well, yeah, you guys are, the Public Works is leaving trees behind people's fences, and I'm thinking, that can't even be close to being true.
It is true.
So of course I call Andrew and I say, what, are we cutting trees down, just leaving? He goes, no, we're not.
No, he's not.
Any tree we take, we take out and we chip. Any tree we cut, any branches we cut, we haul them from the site and have them chipped.
Now, it may have been a private contractor.
Couple of years ago, there was a disease going in trees and they cut the trees down and they left them lay there.
A couple of years ago?
And it's still there, if you don't believe me.
So, no, I, I'm not, I'm not, I'm not.
It is worse.
So, if it happened a couple of years ago, it, it doesn't, this is a different management So if it happened a couple of years ago, it, it doesn't, this is a different management group here.
Well, we're talking about flood zones and, and having.
Yeah. Well, you're not supposed to be leaving, cutting trees down, just leaving later. I mean, how do you know it wasn't a private contract? Do you know it had public works?
Yeah, Warwick Trees did it and.
Well, but see, that's not the, but that's not the township. That's Warwick Trees.
Paid them to do it.
Yeah, you're talking about the Dutch elm disease that they had.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, the township did.
Well, they should, well, Warwick Trees, somebody should have called, somebody should have called the manager.
And we were told by Parks and Rec that we were taking care of wonderful.
Trees down and leave them there.
All right. So, so.
We both live on each side of it.
But somebody should have called the manager and said, hey, our contractor left trees there and we would have removed them.
Well, that was when, um, yeah, Parks and Recreation had it.
That's right.
Well, who, who, well, you shouldn't have been calling Parks and Recreation. You should have been calling the manager.
What year are we talking about?
This is what I'm talking about.
A couple of years ago. They're still there.
About four years ago.
All right. So, so if there's trees there that our contractor cut down, then we'll have to check that out and see about it. But if I do not call, no one should be calling anybody in any department except the police, nine, one, one, or whatever that, uh, the other number is.
I understand that. I talked to Andrew.
But I'm, I'm trying to explain to you how this will work seamlessly and smoothly and no one wants to do it. You need to talk to the manager and the assistant manager because they are responsible for the operation of the township. Not the public works, the parks and rec, the library, and everyone else takes direction from the manager and the assistant manager. So I'm asking you, please, if you have a problem, call Tom or Lisa.
You'll get better results.
And you'll get, and you'll get action on that. That's correct.
Okay, you can give me your card, right? What's your phone number? Cause I talked to Andrew and it's.
Well, again, you shouldn't be talking to Andrew.
Yeah, I, yeah, absolutely. Uh, there is one thing I just want to add a P S to what Mr. Hayes just said for everybody watching, you know? We do have a work order system on the website, but it's for the regular stuff, like you've got a pothole or, you know, something like that. Because the, the, the division of labor has changed so much over the last couple of years between the authority and us. There, there's some things that we will then contact the authority about, especially if it regards to waterways. Because even though they don't own the waterways, they're, they're responsible now as everybody's getting these bills these days about the pervy surface and the building. They're building up the capital to make those changes to the infrastructure. So we work with them, uh, on, on issues like that. But if it's, if we hired a contractor to cut trees down and branches and they're still there, we will take care of it.
Yeah, now, but then they didn't.
Something that we did or somebody did in our name and it's two or three years later and it still hasn't been rectified, we'll take care of it.
We didn't know about it. You, this is the first you're coming to us and saying this. So any, and it's for, and everyone out in the, in the, in, watching on television, everyone here, do not call any department. You must call the manager or the assistant manager because they are not authorized to act on anything without the permission of the manager or the assistant manager. So, and that's the way the system works. If you go, if you circumvent that, it doesn't work. So we, we're, we're trying to make this township the most efficiently run township, which will, which will reduce costs and expenditures. But if everybody keeps running around, the people that run township, it'll never work.
Yeah. Well, that was a few years ago.
Well, I understand that. I understand that. But from going from here forward, please just call the manager or the assistant manager. No, no department is to, is authorized, and I'll say this to everyone here. No department is authorized to act on anything without the permission of the manager or the assistant manager. And that's it. That's the way it works. So, you know, and I'm not raising my voice at you by no means. It just drives me nuts that, that this, that this organization can't run efficiently because that's the way it's been run for 40 years. And that's one of the reasons why we went broke. And we're not broke anymore because we straightened that, most of that out. So, I mean, I'm, I get, this bothers me because it's two and a half years now. I've been trying to get this point across. So everyone out there, call the manager, call the assistant manager and you'll get action. Call the department heads and they do something without permission, then they're going to be, uh, they're going to have to pay a price for that.
Okay, send he'll give me his card before we go.
Absolutely.
Yeah, this isn't Longdale.
Yeah, but in Longdale, it, it, yeah, I know, I know.
Well, I was Long, I was Long Crest.
I know, I know. Because it was a great town. That was a great neighborhood. That's right. Yes, it was. I miss it.
So do I.
All right.
But if you need things like library hours or stuff like that, please call the library.
How are you?
Good, good. How you guys doing?
Good.
I'm Robert Angelista, seven thirty six Charles Drive, um, coach and president for the Warmminster Pioneer's Football. Piggybacking off the whole mowing thing, I understand, you know, I got hit a little late, so if I beat a dead horse, I apologize. Saturday was over at the field. Warner Park is our home field. Grabbed some decorations for the parade. Kudos anyway. That was lobbying the organization. Uh, and execution of that, including, you know, police department.
Yes.
Another awesome year of it. Um, great turnout as always, but the field wasn't cut. All right. No big deal. That was last week. Whatever we have this week. You know, we're running our spring football league over at Shismanic Park.
Yes.
Already had one week this year. Field was probably good four and a half high. Parents, I don't know, complained there. I think we hear comments. So there today, we wanted to try to spray paint and get our, you know, our lines lined. I know, you know, we talked to, we had coaches calling people. We had, you know, one of our coaches is, you know, and as we've said, is someone who knows.
Anthony Mason?
He's one person, but you know.
I talked to him today.
Yeah. So I know he talked to you. It was some other people making phone calls and I know we're scheduled for tomorrow.
Yes.
But if we hadn't made those phone calls, when would they have gotten cut?
Tomorrow.
Yeah.
Yeah.
A hundred percent.
Yeah.
You know.
Yeah, they were.
We have to camp, we have, we would have to cancel our Sunday game.
No, I understand. And there's.
Two hundred people that have paid and registered and.
Yep.
You know, and I understand being backed up and being short-staffed and it's, you know, switched to a new plan and all that, but that's the second time this season. We're only at eight, nine week season. So.
Yeah, it'll be cut tomorrow and that was already scheduled. It was actually scheduled for today, but they didn't, you know, they, they cut Monroe and I don't know Worcester. Worcester, yeah. So, so Werner and, and Shismanic are going for our stuff tomorrow.
Which is great.
Yeah. And they're supposed to be on a seven day schedule and that's what we want to get on. So because anything that, like, like football and all that, we want that grass nice, like, you know.
And see, totally. I've been trying to get like every 10 for off-season just to let the grass replant itself.
Yeah.
Uh, the other thing is long-term, that was a short-term concern. Long-term is like, you know, some guys have mentioned about these pocket parks. There is a brand new, uh, treatment plan, an aggressive treatment plan put in for all the sports fields because of, you know, in the past that we had a, it didn't work out the way we hoped. You know, the, the contract and the services done. So they were heavily seeding it and fertilizing and all that stuff. And now we get these four and a half tall grasses that are just going to clump up. It's going to knock all that work and all that money out because now you have these clumps of grass just killing this new grass and new growth. So I, you know, is there a way that they can?
What, what areas of these you're talking about?
Well, the ball fields, the actual football fields at Warner and Shismanic. If you have these tall grasses getting cut, that's just get clumps of grass.
Football fields and the basket and all those fields are being cut once a week.
But I'm saying right now they're not. So this would be now the second time that they got super high and now you're going to cut them, leave those giant clumps of grass. And like they, like a couple of these other managers.
Yeah, they might.
And they don't get picked up. It's not, you can't bag it. I understand all that, but like, no, it's just going to sit there, kill, you know, and now we're getting these eighty, ninety degree days. It's not going to. You're going to kill the grass that you've just spent a lot of money and time trying to recoup.
I understand. Well, we're, uh, we're working on a seven day schedule and we're hopefully that we'll get caught up and we'll keep maintaining that. But let us, let me know. Anthony has my phone number. I talked to him today. Just have him call me and let me know if it's, if you're not. The, the ball fields need to be cut once a week without a doubt.
Yeah.
I mean, I, I didn't like playing on tall. It's hard to do. Yeah.
Tried to work out last night with some, you know, six, seven year olds. They couldn't even really do a stretch because they, we lost them in the grass.
Yeah, just, just let me know. Couldn't find them, right?
Call the manager.
Call the manager.
Yeah, yeah. Call the manager. Yeah, you know what? That's right. Call the manager. He'll call me.
Kemper Park, same thing. The, the ball field, baseball field over at Kemper Park didn't get cut. The outfield.
Just got cut today.
Yeah, today. Okay.
Look, we knew there were going to be a few hiccups in this transition. We knew.
Yeah, we know it. And, and we were, we were hoping that, uh, you know, and quite honestly, everyone's been great. They're, they're, you're patient. You know, you're voicing your concerns. You're not yelling at us and calling us names and which we appreciate that. Um, but we're, by the time this is old, by the time we get this, are you getting close?
We're working on it.
Yeah. Well, it's not going to happen because we'll get this right and, you know, as time goes on, it'll just be a memory and everything will be fine. You know, we're, we're, we're going to have some hiccups. We're working on it. We've had them already and we recognize right now what some of them are. And one of the main things is that the active areas like the ball fields have to get cut once a week.
We appreciate that.
Thanks for coming in.
I make a comment.
Sure.
If we don't know the complaints and how you feel.
Exactly.
We're very, very glad that you're all here and you're giving your opinions and we will take it definitely under consideration because like, like Mr. Hayes said, we want to have a good work in progress and we know that there's some kinks that we have to iron out. Thank you so much and thanks for coaching.
Anytime, of course.
Go ahead, Lisa.
Um, I was informed by public works, if the fields are long, they're double cutting to eliminate the clumps. So there shouldn't be any clumps there.
That's all. That was my, I didn't know if there was a way to get a double cut or anything.
Yeah, they're doing a double cut.
Yeah, well, yeah, we're not going to leave. That would be horrible.
Yeah.
Thank you, Lisa.
You know, and I'm hoping that the ball fields look like the fields I used to play on down in Florida and all the major league stadiums and.
Got a long way to go for that.
Yeah, down in, uh, you know, the Blue Dells or the Blue Rock Stadium and up in Trenton, there, there's some nice state, you know, baseball fields. But that's our goal.
Awesome.
So, uh, and our public works people, look, they're up for the challenge. They know it's a challenge.
They got a lot on the plate. I get it.
I have all the faith in the world in them. I really do.
Yeah, I mean, they, they've always sung great by the pioneers, you know, making sure things the way it needs to be and cleaning up the trash and they're like, never really have complaints from the public works.
And, um, we are going to light that field up much better.
Yes, we have. Later this year, probably July, we will be discussing those plans for Monroe and Warner for getting electrical straightened out and the lighting, uh, addressed.
Yeah.
Uh, in a, in a, uh, in a non.
In a well-designed, uh, fashion.
Non-bandaid fashion.
Yeah, no band-aids this time.
Very antiquated.
We're going to, we're going to spend.
I also played with the pioneers when I was a kid in the early nineties and a lot of stuff over there is the same as.
I know.
Well, the switchgear over there is from nineteen, nineteen forty, I think.
So.
So, yeah, we're going to upgrade everything we have. We're, we're going to use that to art money to do that.
Karen said there were some really good things in the works. We wouldn't get into specifics.
Yes.
But, uh.
Well, we're going to light up that field, the practice fields and Monroe Park. Soccer fields that are not in operation right now. Those lights we paid for, uh, five years ago, LEDs, not working. So we're going to get those fixed or redone. And I'd like to see, uh, the baseball field, the baseball diamond at Monroe Park lit up so we can play night games there.
Awesome. Can't wait.
Yeah, that's the plan.
Grab some business cards after the meeting.
Oh, absolutely. Yeah, Tom's going to be a busy guy.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Thanks for volunteering to coach too. That's, that's awesome. All right. Anybody else? All right. Thanks for everyone's comments. Okay, where are we? Uh, consent agenda. All right. Consider approval of the board of supervisors minutes dated May fifth, twenty twenty-two, which I'm sure everyone read. Consider approval of the workspace workplace safety manual amendments. Does anyone need to, do we need to have a discussion on that?
Consent agenda to read them all and then we will.
Yeah, yeah, I know. Uh, consider approval of the state tick mitigation study in Monroe Park. Consider Chick-fil-A drive-through modification release number one final from escrow account the amount of twenty thousand, one hundred and ten dollars and twenty cents. Consider nine hundred York Road release number one from escrow account the amount of a hundred and four thousand, five hundred dollars. And the proclamation wounded hero adoption. Is there a motion?
Motion to approve. Second.
Okay. Any questions or comments? Tom, would you like to, uh, give us a, would it be you or, or Craig with the workplace safety manual amendments? Just a thirty thousand foot, uh.
This is a lengthy document that our, our safety committee, uh, and Kathy was here, did a great job on. A lot of revisions were needed throughout the document so that our insurance, uh, the dividend, uh, the dividend property liability uh, would continue to grant us the, uh, safety committee discount. Uh, they recommended changes. Everybody involved, the, the employee, uh, safety committee, uh, went through them all and made sure that they were, uh, uh, adopted and, but we do think that we need the board to adopt the changes in order to make it official, then, then we can file it with, uh, divot.
Okay.
Thank you.
Any other questions or comments? Okay. Any questions or comments from the public? Okay, being none, let's call the question on favor.
Aye.
All opposed. Chair votes aye. Motion carries five oh. Thank you. All right. Mr. McKay.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'd like to make a motion. I'll ask for a second to approve the bill list dated May nineteenth, two thousand twenty-two and the amount of eight hundred and eighty-one thousand, fifteen dollars and twelve cents and the supplemental bill list dated May the twenty-seventh, two thousand twenty-two and the amount of nine hundred and forty-eight thousand, six hundred and fifty-four dollars and eighty-three cents. The total of one million, eight hundred and twenty-nine thousand, six hundred and sixty-nine dollars and ninety-five cents.
Second.
I'll take a second.
Okay. Janet's seconds. Any questions or comments? Questions or comments from the public? Okay, let's call the question. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed. Chair votes aye. Motion carries five oh. John? You have good news for us again, right? Perfect. Uh, just before John gets here, I just wanted to say that, uh, I spoke with Bobby Loftus tonight and, um, that everybody in the township as for the last couple of years, um, are paying their taxes on time. It's, 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 I, I thank everyone for that because it makes us, it makes it much easier on this end to operate the township when everybody pays their taxes on time. So thank you again. Go ahead, John.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Chair. In your binders, I actually had, there's a yellow tab that could take you to the summary page. It's a little bit easier to find this month.
Thank you, Mike, for that, by the way.
No problem. Um, so looking at revenues, revenues are up nine percent for six hundred and eighty-eight thousand the same categories, transfer tax, EIT. Again, Bobby's, she's exactly at ninety-three point six percent this year. She was exactly ninety-three point six percent last year. So we're looking pretty good. Um, two other categories that are up, it's kind of a bit of a change, is the business privilege tax and the mercantile tax. Those two in total are up three hundred and seventy-five thousand compared to the same point last year. So that's a good thing that the businesses are, are rebounding very good.
Excellent.
Yes.
Um, looking at the expenses, uh, expenses are down three percent compared to this time last year. Another good trend. Um, the one thing I like to look at on the expense side, because that's a more steady, uh, throughout the year, is we're at twenty-five percent of budget. That's through four months. So four months would be thirty-three percent. So that we're only at twenty-five percent. Means we're trending behind budget, which is a good thing on the expense side. Okay?
Okay.
Um, the only other, uh, I do have two more things. Uh, first, just to give an update on the audit, uh, the orders were out here last week for two days of field work. Uh, I spoke to Julie this morning. Uh, we're hoping to have a draft like in the next couple of days already. So she's going to Ireland. We're kind of, uh, working around trying to get her at, at the July meeting. If not, it'll definitely be the August meeting. We'd have the presentation, but the statements will be ready waiting for that.
June? All right. Wow, that sure beats, uh, sure beats October.
John, we're all going to fall off our seats here.
Not two years late.
And preparing for the audit, one of the things we do is there's two sets of financial statements in the audit. One is, uh, a government-wide, which is a full accrual, which capitalizes assets and depreciates them over time. So the one thing, when I'm putting together the fixed assets, I do have a total amount of how much money was put into the township in twenty twenty-one. Uh, it's up there almost fi- eight point six million dollars in fixed assets last year. Uh, some of the projects are done, but that's just the twenty twenty-one investment that was put into the community. Uh, some of the things that make that up, some traffic light upgrades, uh, there was some battery backups and a light over by the Walmart on Street Road. Um, the one thing most people probably don't know is we capitalize library books. They have a useful life. So we take that amount and, uh, that depreciate them over a ten-year period. On the last five years, we averaged spending about ninety-one thousand dollars on, uh, the collections over at the library.
We're actually required to spend twelve percent of our budget.
Right.
On books and other materials for the library in order to get that state aid, a hundred thousand dollars.
Yeah, it's like a hundred and seven, something like that. Shannon Doe Woods, we spent nine hundred and forty thousand. Uh, most of that was the nine hundred thousand for the purchase of it, but we did start getting some of the bills from the redevelopment authority. So we started getting a little bit there. I'm sure twenty twenty-two, twenty-three, we're going to see a lot more, uh, put into Shannon Doe Woods. The road program, uh, three point two million dollars. Now, this includes engineering costs. This is the all-in cost to do the roads in twenty twenty-one. So that was twenty-one miles for three point two million dollars. It's a pretty good deal, I think.
It was the most amazing road program that we've ever had.
Yes, and I believe we already are done the twenty twenty-two road program.
Yes, twenty twenty-two stuff. Wasn't, what is, what, it was only what, seven and a half miles?
We just go home.
Yeah.
And we do have the big number coming up.
Nice.
Warmminster Community Park, four point three million dollars was put into that park. Uh, it's not done yet. Uh, we do have the punch list items. So that total investment over a couple of years is actually more, but that was just what was spent in twenty twenty-one.
Right.
Improving the park.
And it's gorgeous too.
And it was well-spent.
Yes.
Looks great. And we, and you know, and the, the, uh, the plan of this board anyway, uh, moving forward with the help of our manager and assistant manager is to bring more and more, um, tournaments, leagues. Um, you know, that's why we want to light things up, have, have that. It's a, it's a beautiful park system and we want to make sure that, uh, it's well-used. Yes, it's good and it's good for business. That's right in the township.
Make the investment worth it.
Yeah, yes.
It is our jewel and we want to make the best of it. Yes.
As I said, I wanted to make that the, the model for Bucks County.
Yes.
So thanks, John.
Any other questions or?
Thank you, John.
Thank you.
No, great job. I'm glad we can get the audit done in a timely fashion for the, for two years in a row. Okay. No one finished business? And then, uh, didn't this have to be advertised?
Right. It, you'll discuss it, let everybody know that's going to happen. It's probably going to be able to next agenda for caution.
Right, right. Okay. Okay. So under new business, we have the amendments to the responsible contractor ordinance. Just no motion or anything needed for this?
No.
Right. Okay. So, um, this is going to be advertised for thirty days and we'll be voting on the amendments in, um, in July. Okay, that's.
We have there ten minutes. We'll advertise it in the right amount of days.
Yes, yes.
It's not exactly thirty.
It's not.
It can't be more than thirty.
It can't be more than thirty. Yeah, okay. I just.
That's why you two take it.
That's right. Keep me out of trouble.
Does the board have to take action to advertise?
I don't think so. No.
No.
You don't, no, you don't have to. We'll advertise with your direct, unless there's an objection to advertising it.
Yeah, I do have, I do have one question though.
Sure.
Um, by lowering the, um, threshold at which the contractors have to qualify for, for the, um, let me get my, will this make it harder for our local Warmminster residents that are contractors to be able to apply for different projects?
Now, as long as, uh, you know, first of all, anything over twenty-five thousand dollars has to be prevailing rate anyway. So, um, the hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars if, um, doesn't stop anyone.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure our Warmminster people are taken care of first.
There's plenty of contractors in Warmminster Township that live here that meet that RCO.
Okay, that's what my question was. I want to make sure we try to take care of our Warmminster residents first.
Of course.
And then go outside the township if we need to.
Just to clarify, this ordinance covers public money, not private industry.
Correct.
Right? Like if you're building, building a dish on your.
No, it has nothing to do with that. This is only for public spending. And that, and the RCO, what it does, it actually protects the taxpayers from things like Monroe Park where the lights don't work anymore.
Okay, no, that's fine. I just wanted to make sure that our Warmminster residents.
Right.
You know, wouldn't be out of the ballpark for competing for different bids for different projects.
Yes.
Because my goal is to make sure you guys are taken care of.
Yep. Okay. Tom, you're up.
All right. Thanks, Mr. Chairman. As we've alluded to, uh, uh, we're going to get to the, uh, to the presentation for the discussion of the areas that we do want to, uh, have a, a no-cut, uh, policy, uh, to be, uh, established. But first, uh, first item I want to meet, uh, want to mention is Shenandoah Woods. Uh, our, our friends at the Bucks County Redevelopment Authority have been, uh, advertising the bid for the demolition of the dwelling units down to slab and the removal of the, of all the materials, the building materials. Uh, the bids will be open on, uh, June the tenth. So it's coming up at two o'clock at their office on, uh, Pond Street. Uh, we did have a little bit of a problem earlier in the year with a previous, uh, bid that for, for a portion of the job that, that the bids came in way too high. But we're confident that the changes that the RDA made to consolidate everything into one project is going to be, is the way to go. Hopefully, we're going to get the bid awarded. We're going to get the job started before the end of the summer.
All right, Tom.
So, and, 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 and that's the goal. Uh, so they're, they're, uh, uh, they, they've indicated to me that they've gotten some very interested, qualified people, uh, uh, involved in, uh, in that very important project uh, to get rid of these houses that are a serious problem. These abandoned houses that are, uh, are holding back, adding that issue, adding that portion of the base into the, help into the park system. So thank you. All right. So I do want to turn now to our presentation on the, what I'm calling the, uh, the NPDES MS four permit. Before we get into the slides, at least as, as prepared, just a quick overview. As was, as was alluded to by, uh, Chairman Hayes, we have a permit for the MS four program, which is basically the state law that regulates the township's stormwater management that we now split with the Warmminster Authority. And in addition to filing. And in addition to filing reports and changing ordinances virtually every year, we, we think there's some, some value into letting areas grow. Areas that are underutilized, areas that are adjacent to what our ordinances refer to, are, are relevant ordinances that are relevant to the state requirement as a repairing buffer corridor. And I just want to read this out real quick, if you'll indulge me.
Sir?
Sure.
What is, so what is it? Our stormwater ordinance identifies it as "an area of trees and other vegetation located in areas adjoining and upgradient from surface water bodies and designed to intercept surface water runoff, wastewater, subsurface flow, and deeper groundwater flows from upland sources for the purposes of removing or buffering the effects of associated nutrients, sediment, organic matter, pesticides, or other pollutants prior to entry into any surface water and groundwater recharge areas." So, what that means is, these areas, these repairing areas, help filter some of that stuff out before it reaches the streams and creeks. If it reaches the streams and creeks, it changes the chemistry in there. The state tests it, they hold us accountable for it. We have to take remediate, remedial action. They have to be in compliance with oxygen levels, temperature levels, and this, instead of hiving to create an expensive report or an expensive, or fund an expensive project to have the same type of impact. We're hoping to score some points off the areas that we're, we're going to let grow. So, now that I've said that, well, now I'm gonna turn this over to Lisa, who's gonna walk us through the areas that we've designated for growth. Take it away, Lisa. Lisa Howdy-Schell, the Assistant Township Manager.
Hi, Tom. All right, so what you're gonna see first is a PowerPoint presentation of the areas that are currently going to meadow. The slides are fairly redundant, and then I'll have, I'll show you a live map with, from an imagery, from like a standpoint. So, the first map, this is obviously Warminster Township. What's on the map is the municipal boundary. These little areas, which I will zoom into in the PowerPoint, are the areas. The green areas are where it's gonna be going to, are currently meadow. What's also in here are the streams. The purple are flood hazards areas. There's also wetlands in here, and that's what we'll be looking at in the PowerPoint. All right, so the first Warminster Community Park. You see, the white outline is the entire perimeter of the park, and the green area are the areas that are currently going to meadow. You'll see, and this information discussed with Andrew from Public Works. There's gonna be borders will be mowed, or should be being mowed, along the pathways that are adjacent to the meadow areas. So, the borders currently should be two passes, which are ten, which is ten feet. I think there's some discussion that those might become wider, but currently they're ten feet. This is Manic. This lower area is the area that should be a meadow. You see, that's a stream that's running in along there, which would require a hundred-foot repairing buffer. A pathway to be mowed is along the fence line and the community garden. There should be a pathway, okay? And if anyone has any, can they ask questions?
Sure. Oh, well, actually, can we hold it to the end? Is that, would that be okay, so we can come through?
So, Astor Road, Greenbelt, and the Public Works. Down here is Astor Road. There should be a pass, two passes along Astor, along the curb line, and the rest would naturalize. This dark blue is a wetland, which should also, which is where the stream is. These other two locations are Public Works locations, which will have, Bristol Road will have two passes along the roadway, and the canal will be cut, and the remaining, Brandon will also have two passes, and the green will go to, to meadow. Hartsville Firehouse, these are the areas that are being proposed for meadow, currently at the Hartsville Firehouse, but are not meadows. So, we have Barnet's, which obviously was a big topic of conversation tonight. And when we go to the live map, you'll, I can show it to you better. But just for, along Gorson, there should be two passes along the sidewalk, and the rest are naturalized. And then the same up here. Right there should be cut, and the rest are naturalized. So, this, this is a Van Gogh.
I'll bid six million.
So, what you're seeing is, you're seeing a stream, you're seeing a wetland, you're seeing a flood hazard area. That all surrounds Kemper Park. So, you have issues with, you know, flood mitigation and the repairing buffers. But what should be cut, what should be cut are the sport, all the sports fields, fence line, playgrounds, pavilion areas. The rear yard beyond Pavilion Three, and Kathy may be able to help, help me with this, that area will not be cut. That will become a meadow. Sinclair Road, like I said, these are all repetitive. There should be a two pass, two passes, a border on the curb line, and if there's a sidewalk. And you'll also see, obviously, stream and wetland is part of this. And the last is the crossings. Meadows are being planned in that area, but are not currently implemented. I realize I went through that kind of quick, but I'm gonna go to a live map now. That's more interactive, so you can see, it might be a better visual than this. Okay. Clearly, Warminster, Areovio, same, same layers that were in the JPGs in the PowerPoint. So, I'm gonna go to Barnet's, since that was a topic of conversation, okay? So, we'll go down to Long Gorson. So, the white area, this area, should be getting cut. The rest should be a meadow. I'm gonna turn the meadow off, just so you can, you might know what's under it, but I just want to show what's under it. And I'm gonna turn the mowed area off as well. You have flood, you have flood hazard areas. So, you have wetland, you have flood hazard area. Turn off flood hazard area. Predominantly just a grassy, I say just, a grassy area and, and trees. So, if we talk about, and I don't know if this is, this is exact, if we talk about the repairing buffer, I can measure this. We say we need a hundred feet. We're gonna go from here, and we're gonna go out a hundred feet, or right there. That's the space, or the estimated space, that is needed for the buffer. So, that's the area that's being turned to meadow. That's the area that should not be touched because of the repairing buffer. I'll go up to the other one. So, it's, it's similar. It's, you know what it looks like. So, we have the field, we have the grassy area, you have the wetland. I'm gonna do another measurement. It's right here, go a hundred feet. We're into the middle of the field, which can't be touched, okay? Is there someone, somewhere else that someone, sure? Yep. Okay. So, I'm gonna turn off the layer, so you obviously see it's flood hazard. So, what should be cut, I'm sorry, let me go back in here. This is, this is, this is interactive as well. So, I'm sorry, apologize. One second. So. Okay, so this is what should be cut. It's the same as the, it's the same as a PowerPoint, but what should be cut is all the sports fields, playgrounds, fence lines, pavilion areas, and the rear yard behind, beyond Pavilion Three would become a meadow. This is, this is a flood hazard area. It's in a wetland, and it's by a stream. I'm sure you have a question. I never forget your name, I'm sorry.
Yes, so my question is, with the Kemper Park there, like, how they, because we were told that that's not a recreational area, but when you live there and you look out in that area every single day, I work from home, I ride in, dust bays that park every day. There are people playing, walking their dogs in that park all day long, especially through the pandemic, it was used. There's people lay, that lay out in the grass there sometimes, sunning themselves, like, so I don't understand who, like, how it came to the decision that that wasn't a recreational area that's used. We could have allowed them on that there in the summer.
So, I don't think it was decided that it's not a recreation area. As been, as has been mentioned several times tonight, we're required by the state to meet certain guidelines for MS4, for stormwater mitigation. This is a floods, this is a flood hazard area. It's a wetland, it's a stream. We have to take into consideration the repairing and buffer. We also are trying to receive, we want to keep sediment and out of the waterways, to have cleaner water, right? So, this is an area that's in, it's in a, it's in a flood zone. So, it's not saying, we're not saying it's not a recreation area to you. It has been a recreation area, recreation area to you. We recognize that, but it's also in a flood zone.
So, what about all of the vents that are there for sewage plant that are currently not being mowed around? They, whoever maintains, so sometimes they have to get to those vents, and there's three-feet-high grass all around. They're not being, how are they gonna get to those, to clean them out or do maintenance or do whatever they need to do?
Are you talking about the sewer lines?
The, the campaign vent.
Oh. I don't know if I can answer that question.
They're just.
Cleanouts?
They're just vents. I don't think they're cleanouts.
They're vents.
Yeah.
They do come to them and have to do stuff to them. I watch them do it.
Inspect them?
I don't know.
They might inspect them, yeah, but they're, they're just vents. I mean, I, I work in three-feet-high grass almost every day and drill wells, so I mean, you can get there. Well, grass won't go that high. Grass doesn't grow six feet. But that would be the municipal authority. I'm sure those guys will just be more than happy to walk right over to it, as they do all the time.
And I just want to add one thing, excuse me. We are meeting with the authority on Monday, their executive director and the assistant director, to, to, to discuss these very things with them as well.
Right.
And to, you know, to get their, their take on it. Because they are responsible for, the MS4 permit is split between the two agencies.
Yes, so you can see the flood hazard zone pretty much covers the entire area.
Excuse me, quick question. Did you just say that the township and the authority are co-permittees on this?
Yes.
You are?
And it's the.
And so, between the authority and the township, who has the, who has the responsibility? The question is, okay, so you're, you're co-permittee on the permit. Who has the ultimate decision-making authority for the stormwater issues? Is that within the township purview, or?
That's the municipal authority's purview.
Okay.
But it's mandated by the state.
We're, we're co-permittees because it's.
And who do we talk to at the permit authority?
Dalton George.
Who?
Dalton George.
Okay.
He'd be, he'd be more than happy to help you with that stuff. He's incredibly, incredibly helpful. Now?
Good evening. Bob Wells, Hallwall Avenue, Warminster, PA. Is there anything going to be done in the golf course? Has that been looked at? I mean, there's no.
Golf course has got, golf course has got plenty of stuff in there. You, I golfed there today. You've been over there? There's, there's more tall grass over there. It's almost turning into a, what do you call it, a links course.
Okay.
Yeah, there's plenty, there's plenty.
Can that be included in this?
It is included in this.
I didn't see it up there, that's why I asked.
Oh, no, because the, because the questions are coming from the residents. We didn't include the golf course.
Okay.
But we can include it in, in that, that certainly.
We, we, we pay. About a dozen balls in there.
Yeah, yeah, I lost about a dozen balls in. Greens were wonderful.
Got to hit them.
We pay for the maintenance of the golf course. They do it, we pay for it.
The golf course is, is a huge buffer for stormwater. But there's, it's not enough, unfortunately.
I have a question. Oh, I know along Olive Drive in, in Warminster and Speedway neighborhood, the businesses that are on street road, they all have this large grassy area that they don't like to cut. Can, are we allowed to ask businesses if they want to, instead of having to mow that, have that go to meadow?
I don't think.
To add to that?
I don't, that's something that I just talked to the county about, and that's going to be, have to be addressed in an ordinance because residential, residential areas are covered by our ordinances, and there's, you know, you have to maintain your property, so.
This is, this is businesses.
Well, I understand, but it's still, it's still, it's still in the, under the ordinance. So, I just had this conversation yesterday with the county.
Okay, it was just a thought, because I thought we could compromise.
There's some bigger, bigger properties throughout the county that, they're no longer farms, but they're looking at them to go meadow, but they're under, they're zoned or two. So, you know, it's gonna have to be done by ordinance by the townships. So, it's something that's being looked at now, yeah, yeah.
I was just trying to see, because I know Barnet's Park, the top part, the children like to play in that area. So, I was thinking if we could compromise and use some of these properties in Speedway that has a water problem as well.
As a mitigation?
Yes.
Yeah, but the problem is that this isn't a flood zone.
Well, I understand, but there was a part of that where you hit the, you know, the one hundred feet, and then there was still area between where that line was and where your mow line is.
Yeah, that area that Lisa's showing now and Gorson, we can widen the cut areas.
This cut area right here?
As long as we, we stay away from the trees.
Right, okay.
We can widen along the street.
If we stay out of that hundred foot, I think we can widen that.
Is that a grable with everybody in the, in the community?
We do have some elbow room there.
I was waiting for the presentation to be over, or to bring that up.
I'm sorry.
You know, and that's, that's, these are the options that we said we were going to be looking at as we're moving forward, so.
So, instead of making two cuts, making four cuts, or more?
Well, no, we can go out to the hundred-foot buffer and then mow everything else beyond that.
Right, and we just want to stay away from, and some of the area you can see, it's purple now, but there's, we just want to stay away from the tree line and hit, make sure we're, we're, anything out to the street, away from the hundred feet. We do have elbow room there, we do have latitude there, yeah. That is definitely worth, worth pursuing. But I don't, I just want to get back to the point is that the priority is, and it's going to be, and Coach was talking about this earlier, and when it's cut, it looks great, Werner, it's going to be the active, the active sports field areas. But we definitely have an opportunity to make, to make that area, you know, widen the area that we cut. Because if we're, if it was there and it's a couple extra passes.
So, so you'll see that that widens, that almost takes it in half of what the size is currently, minimize the meadow.
Yeah. Thank you. I think that'll go a long way with our community in them adopting this project.
I don't disagree with that, yeah.
And the, the same one up the street across at Log College, we've got two directions we can widen there. You know, from the backyards, further in the interior, and then the street, further toward the interior. Or we could just scout out that one hundred-foot spot and leave the areas along the tree, leave the area along the tree line to go. And it's, it's been mentioned a few times, I'm sorry to, to repeat it, but, and this was, you know, I put this in motion, right? It's day one, this is year one. Next year, we will, over the winter, we're gonna come up with a plan to make sure that we are, the areas that aren't going to be cut are gonna be more than just long grass. Even though there are benefits to that, that all the, you know, the Penn State extension everybody else talks about, there's, there's a better way to do it. But we want to make sure we're doing it, you know, from a, a business-like approach, and also to make sure that we're not, not just creating another financial problem. But hopefully by then, we'll have a lot of things that we're working on straightened out, finance-wise. And we'll have, and we, I'm sorry, Ken. And we will, you know.
And we will, you know, make it known through presentations like this at the board meetings. Maybe we'll have one at the library. Instead of having, what we had to do right now was, we had to pivot, and Andrew had this plan in his back pocket that we, and I said, "All right, let's go with it." Thank you, thank you, Lisa.
Sure.
So I guess at this point, right now, there's no reason why we can't just keep the 100 foot repairing and buffer and then mow everything else?
Well, yeah, as long as it's not, you know, it's, you know, like, it's a crazy angle or there's a tree in the middle of it or something like that, yeah.
Especially those areas, because they, we're cutting there now, it's a couple extra passes.
Right.
So obviously, again, reiterating myself, that would cut the meadow back some if they just take the consideration of the buffer and give a little bit more space.
So all the parks are just Farnes?
Well, right now, we're talking about that, these two.
Right now, we're talking about these two.
Since residents back up to that, we want to be able to...
They do it, Kemper.
It's still in plan.
Well, Kemper, can you put up Kemper?
Sure.
See, that's in a complete flood plain.
It is.
That's the problem.
That creek flood.
That's actually a flood hazard zone, it, so, I mean, we're going to cut, what was the, what was the plan on that?
Is it the...
Yeah.
Is it the, I'm sorry, is it the whites, the purple stripe, the green one?
Yeah.
So the, the white is the, is the, is the mow area, the green is the meadow area.
But the houses are closer to the meadow area than they are the other, correct?
Well, is there, it looks like there's a stripe in there between the houses and the meadow.
Here, this one?
There's a large patch, yeah.
Right here?
Well, we can see it, if we can, if it's one, maybe we can do two. I don't, I guess it's like four or five feet?
But can we do 100 from the creek out, so it's not so close?
Where you have the flood, where you have the flood plain designation, that becomes the repairing area. It, it, the, the rule is either the repairing area or the, or the flood area, whichever is greater.
There are restrictions with the MS4 plan that we have to follow. Right, we don't have any choice in that.
They're part of it. Well, yeah, but if it's in a flood hazard zone, it's 100 feet or the flood hazard zone, whichever is greater. The flood hazard zone is greater.
The other parks I don't think were in, were in the purple flood hazard.
Right.
Right.
Yeah, the, the purple isn't, isn't as prevalent, prevalent in other places. This is a tricky one right here, because the entire thing's in a flood hazard zone. But, you know, we're going, we're already cutting the, the active areas of other ballfields and all that, but you can see, if you turn off the, Lisa, can you turn off the, the green? Yeah, see, that whole thing's in a flood zone. So, so that's the rule that we didn't make. Comes from the DP. Who makes them?
How old are they?
I think they're very recent. FEMA makes them, they just, they just made them a few years ago.
This is something there.
And map it?
Oh, absolutely, yeah, they map it with Landsat and GI, and, and flyovers and, it's called LiDAR. So there's a couple ways to do that, it's LiDAR and Landsat, and they use them both.
Is there something we can plant in that area that would compensate so that they could have more, one more swipe of, you know, lawn mowing closer to their property if we put a certain type of tree there?
Isn't this in the rear of their yards?
Yeah, it's all of our yards. That's my property right there.
Oh.
Well, I guess my question is not, I guess I just poorly worded, is that...
You can see there...
Our properties don't flood, a few houses do, not my house, but in the, the park.
Yes, that's why it's a flood hazard zone.
And the creek, yeah.
So, believe it... I'm sorry, I was just going to get into the...
We'll take a look at it. I don't know if we have quite the elbow room there, but we can take a look at it.
I mean, another pass, I don't know. We're going to have to look at that, it's a tricky one because it's in a, in a flood hazard zone.
And that's exactly why, yeah.
We can do the best we can under whatever, within the restrictions that we have. That's the best we can, we can promise.
I mean, there's other options, you can plant trees there and then nobody, I mean, then it's trees, then it's forest.
Right. But I guess, I guess...
In the long term, that might be the way to go.
Yeah, and that's probably...
Would you be, would you guys be happier with the trees?
Yeah, anything with three feet high grass, with like, trees would be better, flowers would be better, anything would be better.
I, I believe that's the point, is that eventually there will be wildflowers, native flowers.
Right.
And, and trees.
And trees.
We, we were told they weren't going to plant them, they were just going to have them naturally, and that...
Well, that's not true.
That doesn't matter.
We're getting, who told you that?
Right.
Andrew at Public Works.
Well, again, you should get on to Andrew at Public Works.
Obviously, he doesn't, he doesn't play.
Apparently Andrew's the guy under the bus tonight.
All right, I'm going to, I'm going to say this again, I'm going to say this again.
One more time.
Everyone has to talk to the manager or the assistant manager.
We, well, look, we have, Andrew is actually in the process of acquiring what, seed, the bird feeders and the, all the other stuff, the bats.
Everything.
No, the bat box is not the bats.
What?
The bat box is not the bats.
Not the bats, they'll show up.
No, he's getting the bats.
They'll, they'll come out of your attics.
So, and again, and I'm sorry, this sounds like a cop-out, I don't mean to be, this is the reality. This is the first iteration of what we're trying to do here. And we cannot go back to 2021 and wait for a better plan to come along. It's too expensive, it's, it's a bad idea.
And we can't go back to 1960 either, when, when it should have all been well thought out, which it wasn't, so...
But we will, we would, what we can do in 2022 is, is take a closer look at these areas, the boxes are kind of self-evident, the areas where we might have a little bit of elbow room. But we'll look at your area too, and what, what we can do where we feel safe widening the cut.
Yeah. If we can do trees, we will...
Well, that's eventually what's going to happen.
Right, that's probably what's going to happen.
Because repairing zones should have trees and shrubs and understudy, as it's called. So that, that's probably what it'll wind up doing, but, but for the time being, because we don't want to have, during storms, people taking measurements of the water quality and us failing and paying all kinds of fines and having to do mitigation and remediation, this is probably our best option right now in flood plains, in, in flood hazard zones. So next year, it'll look a lot nicer, and we're hoping not to pay thousands of dollars in fines.
Have we done that?
Have we done that? Well, we were about ready to get the, the, put in jail because we hadn't had an MS4 NFTs permit for, what, four years? Which is a violation of all state laws in the Clean Water Act and the clean, clean streams and waterways. And we can thank the previous administrators for that. But now we have one. DEP tested, we don't.
So, so, let me just make a comment.
Come on up.
Yeah, again.
Can name an address on record, thank you.
Brian DeVine, 1005 Gorson. Look, we're all with you guys and want to support you in, in the municipal authority meeting your requirements for the NFTs permit. There's more than one way to skinny cat, I've probably done 100 of those NFTs permits in my career.
For, for, for non-point source?
For general stormwater permits and non-point source and point source.
And PAO3?
I've done, I've done them all for industry, and so...
Yeah, but that's industry, that's point source.
Well, we have overland flow too, not a lot of our projects.
I know, I deal with all the time.
General permits, but my point is, is that I'm happy to hear that you're flexible with the design and you're going to be doing more plantings. There's different grasses you can incorporate to make it more attractive to diverse species. You know, migratory birds. I understand you can, you can kill two, three, four birds with one stone here, you have a good opportunity, we're happy about it. It seems like the cart was pulled for the course, which kind of taken a few people off, including myself. I was on vacation for a month, I come home, I've got three feet of grass across the street. So we're happy for that, just as long as we know who's responsible for what. If, if indeed the municipal authority is responsible for the stormwater aspects of it and they are directly responsible between the two entities here in Warminster, you're both co-permittees, but they have the ultimate responsibility, right? It sounds like this is all being driven by stormwater.
Yes.
Right?
It is.
Okay. So...
MS4.
Right.
The unfunded MS4.
We need to have the municipal authority answer questions. I mean, I could ask you questions all day long, but they have the ultimate accountability for this, right?
He's actually on the water.
The, the, they are responsible for all, all the public facilities. They're also responsible with us for the health of the, of the waterways. So all the facilities that were sold to them last year, that run everywhere throughout the township, the, the culverts and the drains that are on public property and in the streets, they have the responsibility for it. We together are responsible for the health of the streams.
Yes.
So they can impact it in a very large way with the projects.
Right.
And we can impact it in, in smaller, but not insignificant ways. And we have an agreement, we have an agreement with them on who's responsible for what.
Okay, good.
And it's, I, I guess it's like a year and a half old, and so what are...
More than that.
Yeah, it's been longer than that.
Most of our closing, most of our closing years of all 2020.
But regardless, we're, 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 we're working together. I mean, they, they maintain and repair all the infrastructure for stormwater. That, some of that wasn't well thought out either. So they're, they're still working on that to get that whole system cleaned. They've, I think that they've done like almost three miles of it already and they're halfway through and we want to, you know, it doesn't function real well when it's all clogged up for 60 years.
Yeah.
So, but then, that's them, and then we, we are trying to do this to mitigate the overland flow into the, into the creeks.
Right, and, and it's great, I mean, we're all for it, but I think it's a false equivalency, equivalency to think, and I know you need to throw the DEP a bone, you have their requirements, it's, it's nice to do things that enhance the stormwater mitigation efforts, but if anyone thinks that it's going to have any meaningful reduction in the sediment load in Tributary A to the Little Nishemity, which is the one that runs across from my house, I want some of what you're smoking. There's no way, there, there's no way that it's going to have any meaningful reduction there because the load is coming upstream.
Some of it.
So you have an undersized pipe going under Gorson Drive, number one. You have a culvert that is illegal, that has no wing walls, and you get underflow. So it's an engineering solution too, right? We have to look at the real solution to the flooding and the addition of the sediment load in that river. The repairing efforts, they're great, that's like the fine tuning, that's going to be the polishing. But to take care of the big loads, you need something, you need an engineered solution. You need bigger pipes, you need retention. That, when acting floods, forget it, there's no trees or grass that are going to stop, really stop the, the loading of that tributary.
Well, have you ever seen a, a field that's been, I mean, I used to work for the US Geological Survey and always we, we did a lot of high water measurements, some in some really dangerous situations. Did you ever, did you ever go out after a huge flood and storm and see all the grassy areas, all the high repairing areas? They're all covered in mud, so it does work. Does, takes, it takes a significant amount out.
It works, but it's...
Yes. But now, now let me explain some more to you.
It's a small percentage of the total load.
Now, now let me explain a little more to you. In Warminster, everything's designed or approved by our engineer for a 100-year flood, storm, 100-year storm. All the culverts, we're surrounded by state roads. Every one of those state road culverts that, that drain Warminster are only engineered for seven years, seven-year storms, which happen every other day, and they are not going to fix them. So now that's, now that may be something that, that the residents may want to address with our state senator and our state representative. Because if you talk to Pendott, as we've done a million times, from the municipal authority end and from here, they basically say, "Yeah, we know."
Right, they just ignore us.
And, you know, we're not going, we're, we're not doing anything about it until they collapse. Then they'll, then they'll fix them, but who knows? So, so that is, so that's a big bottleneck and it's a problem.
That is the problem.
But, and I agree with you with that, you know, I mean, obviously you got, you have some insight into this and the problem is that it's not going to be solved overnight until we force Pendott to take those seven-year storm culverts and make them 50 or 100-year storm culverts. So what we're trying to do is, as the water backs up, to capture some of the sediment. And that's what this is addressing, because we actually get credits in our MS4 plan for that. So, I mean, that's the whole, and, and we're willing to work with everybody, obviously you see that. We're not, we're not trying to jam this down anybody's throat, we're, we're just, we're dealing, we're, we're playing the cards we're dealt with and we're trying to work with everybody. So we might, some of these areas, we might, they, they might not become places to sunbathe anymore. They might just be all trees and understory.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
Mrs. Sandberg. Centennial Station, as was alluded to earlier, is an over, is a 55-plus community comprising of a number of three, four, and five-story buildings. There are condominiums that are common, the units are owned individually, the grounds are owned collectively by the owners. We found out last month that they want to replace the elevators in some of the buildings and that project will take weeks and weeks and weeks for each one. And the issue, the obvious issue that they seem, they being the association, seemed to have glossed over is, what do we do with people that cannot climb three floor, three and four and five flights of stairs multiple times a day? And from the township's point of view, working with the first responders in the ambulance company and the fire companies and our police department that provide on-site physical aid, what do we do with them getting access to the people that need the help? And how in the world were we going to get people out of those buildings? And I'm not talking about a fire situation, I'm just talking about somebody that needs medical attention. And we need to remove them from their condo and get them into a ambulance and get them to, get the treatment that they need. So we have sent a few letters to the association, most recently yesterday, asking them for clarification on how this is going to be addressed. Several ideas have been floated tonight out here in this room that our emergency management director and fire marshal, Mr. Joe Veltin, who informs us that he is out there four, five or six times a week on medical calls, medical assistance calls. And he's been talking to them in person because he knows them, asking, "You've got to come up with a, a, an alternative that's going to help people." I don't know if a chair lift is going to help the ambulance company get somebody down the steps, but there are alternatives, none of them are cheap, none of them are easy, but we have been asking them to consider these options and letting us know what they're going to do about it before they begin this undertaking. We think it's a reasonable request, I think it's a reasonable request. And there are a lot of people, as, as Mrs. Sandberg has already noted, that live there, that have already had to make alternative plans to go stay somewhere else for weeks and weeks at a time rather than risk being isolated and, if not helpless, in their own homes. And the effort will continue for as long as we, until we get a, an answer. If they are, if they need to rely on us to approve any sort of permit, we will not approve it until we get those answers. I don't think there actually are need to rely on us for any permits as the construction and replacement of elevators is regulated, one of the few things in Pennsylvania, that's directly regulated by the State Department of Labor and Industry. If you go in an elevator, there's a plaque on there that tells you that. Anyway, so we're, we're going to be reaching out to them continually. I am, Lisa's talked to them, Lisa's talked to several of your fellow residents over there about what, what they can do to bring this attention, to bring this problem to people's attention, powers that be. And I have it here, I think, from something that Lisa wrote. The Disability Rights Pennsylvania is an organization that Lisa had contacted and spoke to a person in their intake department about the situation and advised us to tell people that there is a legal director, they have a legal director that we can contact and that the residents of Centennial Station can contact to let that be known. And I, I mean, I, I think it's a situation that they could be, that they should have addressed better. It's my opinion, I think everybody on the board supervised... I think everybody on the board supervisors has expressed a similar position, whether or not the, the issue of do the elevators need work is certainly relevant, but an alternative plan is something that we think that they should be working on. So I thank you for that. Mrs. Sandberg.
I just wanted to add, Mr. Scott, the number that anybody can call.
Oh, yeah. Sorry. Go ahead. I'm sorry, go ahead.
From Centennial Station who wants to, it's, it's the, Lisa had given me the information, you can contact the Disability Rights PA, it's 800-692-7443, and you can report the situation without fear of repercussions. We hope that our lawmakers will, we've been in touch with all of them, I've spoke to some of them personally, that, and Mr. Hayes, Lisa, Mr. Scott, we are working on this for the benefit of the residents, even though we don't have the jurisdiction. We will keep you informed and please, we're hoping that they can delay the project until we've got some answers for you. That's all I have to say, Mr. Scott.
Thank you.
Thank you. And I won't stop fighting for you, just so you know.
Thank you. All right, one more thing, Mr. Chairman, ladies and gentlemen of the board, the Ben Wilson Center project, the installation of the new HVA system, HVAC system, and the installation of emergency generator. The, I'm happy to report that the, that the bids are out. They're on PennBid for any interested party that wants to check it out. The bids will be open on 2:00 PM Tuesday, June the 28th, probably in this room. And the, the project hopefully will, will, will get at least one bid that we can use and start the project later this year. So it's very exciting that we've got, we finally got some traction under this, under this project. Thank you, that's all I have.
Thank you, Tom.
Thanks, Tom.
Thank you.
Okay, solicitors report. Mr. Flagler?
We submitted our report, we have nothing further. Was anyone has any questions?
No, I have no questions. Any on the, on the board?
No questions, Mr. Flagler, thank you.
Mr. Carter?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. You have our June report, I don't have too many additions, it's pretty current, except that the finance director, I won't name his name, stole my thunder that the road program, as far as the paving is done, it's not completed yet, we still have some pavement markings that they're working on. And actually, we're going to be starting coordinating punch lists with, with Andrew and Public Works on the punch list items for the paving, and that will be in between his phone calls with all the residents, so hopefully he has time to work with us on the punch list item.
We'll have to edit it out.
A little joke.
I think somebody's getting a phone call tonight.
No, it's actually, I was going to also, I think Kathy mentioned already, the road program, again, Andrew does a fantastic job, we've worked with him for years, as you know, he used to work with us, and he's very hardworking, my staff is always there to help him out as well, but he takes on a lot and saves you guys a lot of money, obviously the less that we're involved. The first 36 ramps of the handicap program are installed, it's about 30%, they contracted port off last week, they didn't have their job to go to, but they'll be back this week, and they're about 30% done with those ramps. So again, haven't had any issues. The only other comment I wanted to make, and not to beat this anymore, but there's a lot of discussion on, you know, these small little areas that you're working on, what I would consider small for this type of, for your MS4 program, you don't have the open space and the large areas that we have up north. I have several clients up north, a little more, I just have a plan with me that we did a naturalized basin for four acres on a 32-acre site that it just continues to all address MS4, they have so much room to do that. So down here, unfortunately, in the middle of the lower end of the county, where we have, you have this, this conflict, exactly what's going on tonight, it's, it's, it's not easy. I mean, I, I feel for, for Tom, I'm not involved in this specifically because it's the authority, authority engineer, just you know, any new development still has to also meet requirements of MS4, and that's my responsibility.
Right.
Kind of glossed over that, but any new project, any new development, that, that falls only any, on my office and this board, the authority handles and all the, you know, the public facilities, but you just don't have a lot of room, so you always do have conflicts. And the gentleman's right, what you're doing right now isn't going to impact, and this is a big issue in the Penny Pack, which I sent a committee for, Penny Pack has, has a bunch of municipalities involved, trying to look at all the bigger sources of, of the pollutants, but each little piece will help, you're responsible for your permit in this municipality, and that's, that's the answer. Is he correct? Yes. Are you correct? Yes. But every little piece helps, and you have to do it to meet your MS4 for Warmminster Township. Yes, there's bigger source problems elsewhere, but each municipality is responsible for their own. And to be honest with you, the state is the one that has the biggest.
Responsibility, yes.
With all the others.
Yeah, well, thank you.
Sorry, I'll stop talking, I just wanted, everybody's right, and it is, it's tough in other municipalities, we go through this as well, where, where you stop mowing, I think you have a good compromise, where if you just look at the 100 feet and, you know, you go from there and see how it works, but they do have to be maintained too, they don't just, you just can't ignore them, they have to be, the invasive species will take over, and, you know, your Public Works will, will work with the authority on that.
Yep.
So it's a good start, you're right, I do think, we, that was long overdue, for many years, we weren't authorized to do any work because of budget constraints, so you're trying to catch up now.
Yeah, thanks, Craig.
All right.
There's, there's a lot of things that were long overdue here.
Thank you.
And I appreciate the, the kind words there, because we are trying to catch up, you know, oh, for years of, it just goes away, it's not my problem. But, you know, then you have, if you don't like, if you like blue claw crabs, they're having the same problem in the Sault Ste. Hannah, it dumps into the Chesapeake, where there's, you know, there's a lot of, there's a lot of herbicides and pesticides that are killing off all the aquatic life. So I did a long time ago, I did a study, and this will be part of my, oh, sorry, Tom, I'm going to jump the gun. So anyway, I did a study between Inchemity Creek and the Tohekin Creek years ago, as, when I was teaching at Bucks County Community College, of the, of the health of the streams. And I can say, and it's probably gotten worse, that the Inchemity Creek pretty much had nothing but, the, the, they had no, oh my God, it was so long, I can't remember the names, what are they called, like midflies or something like that? Come on, help me out, Amy.
There is something that is midflies.
Yeah, yeah, so all the real sensitive insects and aquatic life is missing from Inchemity Creek because of the, of the build-out of this area and the, the lack of design and, and care for what was going to happen. And that happened years ago, and it was, a lot of it was ignorance, but, you know, we're, we're trying to, as Craig said, every little bit helps, we're trying to catch up, and we want to work with everybody with, as we move forward. Because we didn't have this problem in Lawndale, did we? The only thing was there was the Tookany Creek, right?
Yeah.
Which I swam in, not realizing that the, that the summer, in the summer, that.
Oh, yeah.
And the Penny Pack, that was, that comes all out of the waste treatment plan here.
Oh. I was in that creek.
Yeah, we, we, yeah, that explains it, right? Yeah, I'm sorry, Tom, I jumped the gun. So Township Manager, announcement of upcoming agenda items.
As we alluded to earlier, Mr. Chairman, ladies and gentlemen of the board, the revisions to the responsible contractor ordinance will have, by then have been properly advertised, and will be ready for adoption that evening, we hope. I'm sorry, yeah, this will be the, the first Thursday in July. Is it?
First Thursday, July?
It's, it's July 8th, I think.
July 8th.
We're canceling the second meeting in June, correct?
Yes, I was gonna, I was gonna throw that one out next, yeah.
No objections.
I'll second that.
We also.
They're all jumping the gun.
That's right, yeah, right. There is, I'm sorry, yes, and I will, I will ask the board that we have no more visits to conduct in June, and that we do not need to meet on the 16th. And there is a land development item that will be, it's been a while since we have one, this is the rebuild and expansion of the Seafood America facility that was damaged by fire, we will have it on.
July 7th.
So.
They work for the issues.
Kathy's not, Kathy's going to be out of town that day, can we, can we move that? Would anybody have objections to?
I'm home for the whole month, I don't care, whatever you guys want.
Can we, can we move that to the 2nd?
I can do that, or I can do a Zoom if you want, whatever you guys want to do.
Whatever, whatever you guys want, I'm around.
The 2nd of July.
Move it back?
Yeah.
Are you guys opposed to making it to 14th?
Yeah.
The meeting?
July 2nd.
July, July 14th, rather than July 7th.
Okay.
Everybody okay with that?
That works better anyway, to be honest with you.
Is that okay?
A lot of people are on vacation.
Right, exactly.
That's where I'm going, on vacation.
Right.
Unless you've got anything you want to slip in there, one of you. Folks, you're.
Not really.
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
So July 14th, we'll advertise that.
Okay, thank you.
So next meeting will be Thursday, July the 14th, Board of Supervisors.
Thank you.
And I thank you for listening, and I'll see everybody at Warmminster Day.
Yes.
Yes.
So please come out, it's going to be a good time. We have the EAC booth, you having a booth this year?
Yes, sir.
Excellent. Excellent, with a lot of treats from Burpee, they're always, they're always accommodating for that.
Yep.
And I hope to see everyone there. That's all I have to say, and Kathy?
I just want to.
Oh.
Oh, yes.
Anybody, public comment? Come on up.
All right.
I knew there was somebody.
Well, so you guys already mentioned pretty much everything that was in the EAC's memo about, oh, sorry, Amy Sanchez Hamilton, 396, and Copper. So I, I didn't feel unnecessary to come up here and repeat what everybody had to say. There was a couple of things that I just wanted to reiterate, what Craig was talking about, maintenance is key to these areas, making sure that invasive species are not taking over like they are in some areas of Warmminster, public areas, and we're looking forward to helping with the biodiversity and maintenance, monitoring of these areas with the EAC.
You can help with the maintenance too, that's fine.
I don't want to help with the maintenance, I have enough maintenance, I am.
Okay.
A couple of things that I don't know were touched on, that I just want to put out there, because we're going Mowed Meadow, and I know that Meadow is a big thing in the MS4 and possible credits for businesses and residences, that maybe we should look at the mowing ordinance for the township to give people with enough land the opportunity to also have designated Meadow areas as well, without getting dinged because of our existing ordinances, and the possibility of, of looking at grant funding for some of these projects for the township, because we are helping with environmental concerns in the area, maybe there's some grant funding that we can look at possibly getting.
Grant funding would be fine, as long as it's not matching.
Okay. Very good.
We love, we love non-matching funding.
Yeah.
Yes.
I know that Pennsylvania was.
Right, right, we have a blackboard back there that says, these grants are killing us.
I know that they were doing way back in the, I don't know how back in the day, but a $5,000 per acre type grant through Pennsylvania for Mowed Meadow programs, but I don't know if that's still existing, so I'll do a little bit of research, but we'll take a look at it for you and see what you come up with.
Okay. Thank you.
Thanks, guys.
You're welcome. Go ahead, John.
John Prio was 674 Joseph Avenue. I know that we just did the, the roads back on Prospect, where my, my shop's at. Well, it looks like we're, they, they did Harvey and they stopped it right at that intersection there, but there's potholes past that towards the York Road side, they didn't pave that area, so if they didn't pave the area, they should probably just take a look at it and maybe fill the holes. Okay, just for you guys to, I know you don't go back there that much, so.
Prospect?
Yeah, right there.
Right on Prospect?
Yeah, Harvey, Prospect comes this way, then Harvey, and then the other part of Prospect goes out towards York Road, so it's between, between, I guess Harvey and York Road.
Okay, so if that, thanks, John, if that's not, if that wasn't.
For the public this time of year, some of our Public Works staff could send a road repair.
Right.
People at home, if you notice a pothole, we don't know about, you have to let us know.
Right, exactly. So send, send, send an email to the Township Manager.
Tell Tom. Only these two.
That's right. Do not go to Public Works, or the park, or anywhere else.
Chairman, WMA is installing a new main on Prospect.
I'm sorry?
WMA is installing a new main?
Oh, that's correct.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, that's correct, so that's why they didn't do it, they're going to, they're going to open that road up, put a new water main in there, put ductile iron in, take out the old stuff.
There you go.
So that'll be all paved.
Hey, you just need to talk.
Thanks for reminding me of that.
They're doing, they're doing. Just talk to the system manager.
That's right. Clean water.
Yeah, they're doing a great job, I got a comment from one of our residents in Speedway on Ivy, that they had done repair work there and how the paving's going.
Yeah.
It's so nice that they're, they're forth-thinking, let's fix the problem under the ground before we pave the roads so we don't have to tear it up, so.
That's right.
I like this, this great thinking that's happening.
And that's really old, too.
Just like here, we, we have a five, Andrew's working on a 10-year plan now.
Yeah.
So we don't, we don't just throw darts at a map and decide to pave.
Yep, so this is good things.
Isn't that right, Bob?
There's always a plan.
Oh, he's got his black book, uh-oh.
Good evening.
He always has his cheat sheet.
Bob Welsh, Hollowell Avenue, Warmminster, PA. What I have here is a winning ticket for the Rubber Ducky Regatta, and I want to donate it back to Park and Rec, so I'll be giving it to you, Tom, so you can get it back to Karen.
Fourth place, right?
Doesn't matter what place I count it, it's a winner. Everybody gets it, thank you.
Thanks, Bob, thank you. Okay, is that it? Oh, one more? Okay.
Scott Fland, 1059 Cornell Drive, Warmminster. I just wanted to see if there's a availability to give us notice when there will be some discussion made on the modifications to the Mowed Meadows, such as the, you know, 10-foot buffer zones and, and other areas, whether it be, you know, what type of plant has been done, just, so what type of communication would be given to, you know, Warmminster citizens that where they could have some input into some of their decisions?
Well, what we can do is, everybody that spoke tonight and has, have their information, they have their information out, so we will, we will let them know specifically when we're going to implement the change, to widen those areas we can cut. That should be fairly soon. And then the larger issues again, with, that are going to take, we're going to need time to plan between this season and the same season in '23. We will have more presentations in front of the board of supervisors, as I indicated, we maybe will do one at the library, just so that, you know, different people can come out and, and let their opinions and get their input. So that way, we're going to have some time to, we can have ideas, and we can have.
I would, I would check the, I would check our agenda, and then check on the Warmminster Township webpage, so we'll, we'll put that up there for everyone.
That's what I want.
Yes, absolutely.
It won't be July.
No, it won't be July, but we'll, we'll keep that, like, just check in on the Township page and that'll be there at some point, when, when we get that together.
Okay.
Or feel free to, or feel free to email me.
That's right. Email the assistant manager.
Thanks, Lisa.
Sure, thank you.
Lisa's always volunteering for stuff. Okay, I think that's it. Is that it?
That's it.
All right, supervisors' comments, did we go through that already, or did I miss that? I know I did, I did. Kathy?
I'd like to thank everyone who came this evening to express their concerns, we will take everything under consideration, along with doing the regulations that is needed for the MS4 plan, so hopefully we all can work together and we'll come to some kind of happy medium where we do more planting, as Mr. Hayes said, with the flowers and the green trees, because we're all about beautifying the township. As far as Centennial Station, the elevators go, I hope that our lawmakers do come up with some solutions, that this does not happen anywhere else, and especially in these older buildings. It is unacceptable for four to six weeks for people to be climbing stairs, especially when we have a lot of disabled, and not to mention our EMTs having to climb those stairs, I can't ima, I can't even imagine what that would be like. So again, if we could put on our website the number that the residents can contact for the Disability Rights PA, and I believe Lisa has that number, if you could put that on our website, I'd really appreciate that. And that's it, Mr. Chairman, oh, happy Fourth of July, be safe, don't set off your own fireworks, drive safe, thank you.
All right, Mark.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, a few things, June fourteenth is my son Jack's birthday, I want to wish him a happy birthday, and also, June fourteenth will be Karen Whitney's last day with us, want to wish Karen all the best of happy and healthy and long, long healthy retirement, I think she's really gonna enjoy it.
I think so.
Yeah, after many years served, and also, another person's retiring is Denise Quinn is retiring from McDonald Elementary.
Oh, really?
At the end of the school year, she's been an ESL teacher there for many, many years, and I want to wish Denise all the best, too. And dovetailing onto Kathy's Fourth of July wishes, wish everyone a happy Fourth of July, and if you're sticking around town, over to Southampton Days, our neighbors in Upper South really doing a nice job with the Southampton Days, and they have a great Fourth of July parade, take the kids and the family over there, and there's also an open house at the Amvets on Industrial Boulevard right after the parade, that opened a wall.
And there's fireworks, too, right?
And that evening, there's fireworks, and I think they still bus people from Davisville Shopping Center.
Oh, do they? Yeah, is that still going on?
They had done that for years, I think they still do.
Yeah, they do, like, they have, I, I think they still do.
But they, they, if you're sticking around town for the Fourth, definitely check it out. That's all I have, thank you, Chairman.
Go ahead, Judy.
Oh, I just want to thank everybody for participating, you know, you can't have a democracy without citizen participation, so thank you. And I wanted to remind you that we do still have drug drop-off at the police station in the green, in the green container that's in the lobby, there's still an opioid crisis, so please don't forget those people, there were a lot of, I noticed on, on the chief's report, there were a lot of drug overdoses in the last section, and, last month, and that's still going on, don't ignore it, if you see something, say something and call the police, thank you, and have a happy Fourth of July, and I hope maybe we'll see you at our next meeting, July fourteenth, which I think is Bastille Day, so.
All right, go ahead, Janice.
I'd like to thank everybody that came out in person, I've been speaking to a lot of the residents, and especially Memorial Day Parade, that was so much fun to drive the golf cart and, and get to see all the, the children at, at the parade, so I'd like to give a shout out to the pioneers, because we had representation here tonight, if you're interested in football or cheerleading, then make sure you check out the website, warminsterpioneers.org